On July 22, 2025, I'm going to call this meeting of the Morton County Commission to order. Our first item of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next will be the roll call. Commissioner Zachmer?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Here.
Commissioner Morell?
Here.
And myself, Commissioner Bame. We have Auditor Roan up here at the desk, Sheriff Kirkmire, and State Attorney Copy in the back. Next we'll have the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, regular meeting of the Morton County Commission on July 10, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the, excuse me, July 10, 2025 Morton County Commission regular meeting. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Zachmer, you have bills this month.
Yep, yes, Mr. Chairman. I would make a motion to approve all the bills at this time, except for a bill from Walk and Roll in Haver, Montana.
It's been moved and seconded to approve all the bills, except for the one that he pulled out, that Commissioner Zachmer pulled out of the pile. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair. I'm familiar with the reason why that one's being pulled, so that's why I seconded it as well.
Seeing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Zachmer?
Yes.
Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, just about this bill. There's a bill from Walk and Roll from Haver, Montana. They manufacture the packing equipment that attaches to the rear of our graders. We purchased $2,400, basically $2,407 worth of tires for that piece of equipment from Haver, Montana. Tires are 750 by 15, 14 ply. We paid $300 in freight. It does not say on the invoice what the brand of the tire was. So I called Big O Tire, Northwest Tire, Mandan Tire. Gave them the specifications of the tire, told them that it went on a piece of heavy equipment on a packer. Big O Tire quoted $192 per tire with an $18 per tube. Northwest Tire had two different tires that they said would have fit this piece of equipment. One was $207, the other one was $420. But the $420 tire came with the tube. Northwest Tire even made the statement, how do you know that they sold you these tires and if they come with the tubes, you paid twice? Mandan Tire, their cheapest tire that would have fit this piece of equipment was $299. Their most expensive was $447. Big O Tire would have had the tires within two days, Northwest Tire, three days, Mandan Tire, two days, no freight charge. Mandan Tire did say, though, that if we did purchase the most expensive tire, they would have not had enough to cover the order of five tires, and the rest would then two to four days to get the rest of the five, and still there would have been no freight charges. I don't think the highway department did their due diligence in checking with our local vendors. I know we have to pay this bill, and I'll move as such, but I also request that this bill be given to the road committee for scrutiny and further explanation of why the road department is not using local vendors. That would be my motion to approve the bill and the bill forwarded to the road committee for further scrutiny.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to forward this bill to the road committees for further review and scrutiny. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, as you look, I also called the vendor in Haver. They claim that there's no tires even available for that packing machine, and they have to special order them out of, I believe it was Colorado. Either way, in visiting with her, there was a woman that I visited with. She indicated that tires need to be smooth. I asked about that these tires would be on a packing equipment for gravel roads. They're not going to be used for asphalt or for chip seal. And she had no explanation for that. But I still don't think it's right that we aren't using local vendors whenever possible. And if we needed to get these tires from Haver, Montana, there should have been an explanation attached to the packet as to why, especially when you're looking at that much of a price difference.
Mr. Chairman, the road commission meets tomorrow morning, and we'll discuss it. Let the Commissioner, Paul and I, Mr. Tocash and I will let you know what the deal is.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to move the bill to the road commission for further review. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, the correct motion was to authorize the payment, but bring the invoice to the road commission for their own scrutiny.
Yes, thank you for that correction. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. With that, we will move into our agenda tonight. We're going to start off with Melanie Hansen from Center with the update in 2026 funding request.
Good evening, Chair Nathan, Vice Chair Jackie, Commissioners Andy, Raymond, Paul, and Auditor Don. I'm Alex Krab with Community Service Programs Supervisor for Center, Inc. You should have received our stats from June 1 of last year to May 31 of this year and our upcoming budget requests. We're requesting it be included in your budget for the upcoming year. I want to thank you for the past support you've given to the community service and misdemeanor probation programs. And to speak more about our budget requests, I'll have Jim Becker come up.
Thank you, Commissioners, Melanie and Roan. The misdemeanor probation officer, I don't know if you followed some of the legislation that moved through with the Department Corrections Bills this past legislative session, but there was a bill that was moved through the session and signed into law that's eliminating the collection of probation fees, which primarily affects Department Corrections, Probation, and Parole offices. It does affect our office in addition to that because we relied heavily on the collection of probation fees to remain financially viable. You see that we did, Director Josh Helmer did ask for an increase from each one of the counties this year to see if we can sustain financial viability with the program, both community service and misdemeanor probation. With that said, I'm in the process of trying to set up a meeting with the presiding judge, Cynthia Phelan, to see what the judge's perspective is, if Center, Inc. is allowed to even perhaps assess a fee of $55 a month. If the judges support that fee, then it looks like we'll move forward, but we're also asking for increases from each one of the counties that we're contacting with. I did meet with Burley County, and they have indicated to me that they're willing to increase their amount annually by 5,000. I think we're at 24, and I think they're going up to 25,000. So I guess I can answer any questions regarding that part of the request or what happened with the legislature and how it impacts misdemeanor probation in the community service office.
So we, sorry, Commissioner, Chairman, Commissioners, currently, if you look at that district court budget sheet, you can see Center is the first line there, and we've been paying them $6,000 a year, and I believe the contract now is asking for 800, is it 800?
Yes, I believe that's right.
$800 a month, so that's what, 9,600? So it's an increase from 6,000 to 9,600 is what they're requesting.
Yeah. But I also wanted to let you know that it's not just Morton County that we're asking for the increase. Like I said, Burley County is, we're asking an increase, I think it's Emmons, Oliver, Kidder, your services, for an increase to see if we can maintain. Honestly, it's going to lie on what my conversation is with Judge Phelan and the other judges, if they're willing to support the program and allow us to continue to assess a $55 a month fee. The concern from Director Helmer is that we're going to see a significant reduction in collection of the fees, and I want to say, overall, in the last two years, 27,000, 28,000 has come directly from clients paying the fees, and he suspects that is going to drop because there is not going to be no longer a mandate. To kind of explain it further, I was in court with Judge Hill today, and he was aware of the law passing, and that person was placed back on probation with myself or through Center, Inc., and he specifically said that law is changing August 1. I am not going to assess a probation fee to this person any longer. So I can see that it might be more difficult to sustain collection that I've been making up to this point, and therefore, we're asking the counties for an increase in that. And I can answer some questions. I would like to ask Al Copy to maybe say a few words on behalf of the program, and I know Chase Lingle's in the back, and Josh Breeze, if they were to be willing to say a few words on support of the program.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Becker, for inviting me to speak on behalf of the Center Incorporated misdemeanor supervision program. We've been using Center Incorporated for almost as many years as I think I've been in the State's Attorney's Office, and it's a very valuable tool. You might say that we have a quiver with our arrows in it, and one of those is, in addition to the Department of Corrections supervising probationers, it's Center Incorporated supervising probationers. And mostly, it'll be like Class B misdemeanor supervision services, which the Department of Corrections generally doesn't like to be assigned to that, so Center Incorporated fills a valuable void in supervising offenders, keeping them on the straight and narrow, which is what we'd want to, you know, try to do with every person who goes on probation or who has to see the judge. And I was in court this afternoon with Mr. Becker on that case where Judge Hill may be, you know, he, the express comment that because the law's going to change on August 1, and we cannot any longer assess supervision fees, Center Incorporated is going to have to, you know, take up that slack, and that's why the State's Attorney's Office from Morton County, you know, strongly supports Center Incorporated misdemeanor supervision. Thank you.
Just to echo what State's Attorney Copy has already said, Center, Inc. is an extremely valuable tool. Oftentimes, what we end up doing is we have individuals coming in on drug offenses, but they have prior criminal history that is likely drug-related. As noted, DOCR doesn't monitor misdemeanor probations unless they're already involved in another felony probationary matter. So DOC, or so Center, Inc. has allowed us an opportunity to place individuals in a supervised setting to help assist with the drug problem that has now become a criminal problem. And what we often see is that, just like with DOCR, Center, Inc. is valuable to the individuals who are getting that help, but also to the community in that it reduces the recidivism. I think they're at a 72% success rate. They're all giving me blank stares, but hopefully somebody has the statistics, but they're at a pretty high recidivism rate, or high reduction of recidivism. So 72-ish percent, I think, maybe that might have been last year's numbers, is what they're seeing, and any reduction in recidivism is beneficial to the community as a whole. So their budget helps strengthen not only the county, but also helps the State's Attorney's Office be able to focus on other criminal offenses because now we have less criminals engaged in those sorts of behaviors.
I just want to echo my support for additional funding for-
State your name.
Oh, this is Assistant State's Attorney, Josh Breeze, but I want to echo my support stated by State's Attorney's Copy and ASA Lingle with respect to the funding for the Centering program. ASA Lingle stated that it provides an important outlet for the community, and I think in my experience with the State's Attorney's Office, I've seen that firsthand, just being able to get in contact with Jim as he works through his cases, and we're able to better understand situations in these misdemeanor probation cases, because I think Jim provides a direct outlet for people within the community, Morton County included in that, to understand what conditions of their probation are, what needs to be done to follow through. I think it provides an ease for those on probation to get those services, and I think if Center, Inc. was to, was not to be available to that, I think what we might see is potential lapses in that outreach or ability to reach out to a probation officer. And so, again, I would just echo the comments of State's Attorney Copy and ASA Lingle, and I would be in, I would echo or state my support for continued funding, increased funding for Center, Inc. Thank you.
Just, you know, I worked for the DOC probation years ago, back from 2003 until, excuse me, 91 to 2003, so I have about 12 and a half experience doing that, and then I left that field, worked in the correctional system. And I could just tell you from my personal experience what this role has been a little bit different than working with the DOC. I do spend a lot of time with people, trying to help them navigate the system. Obviously, I work closely with the State's Attorney's Office in Burley County also, very closely with the Morton County, and I think they recognize the need that sometimes they need somebody to help them navigate the system, be that prompting force. I'm not going to say that they don't get that in the Department of Correction system, but I'm going to rest assured, I pay attention to detail, and I spend a lot of time with them, to try to keep them from getting deeper into the systems. And that's why your financial support in the past year has always meant a tremendous amount to our program and stuff. And personally, you know, if they decide to eliminate this position, we'll still move on. I've invested a lot of my time and energy doing this kind of work because I believed in the people and in the communities. So I want you to take that into consideration on what I personally do. And I appreciate the kind of words from the State's Attorney's Office. I always get tremendous support from their offices and the supporting staff, and I've always appreciated, you know, presenting here when I've had that opportunity and stuff. I know sometimes it's hard. You have to make financial decisions based on, everybody's pulling on strings, want money from you and whatnot. I fully grasp that. But my hope is that you take it into consideration, or if you have further questions, you know,
Commissioners, have any questions for Mr. Becker? Or any of the other presenters that were up here? Seeing a lot of nods, no, so.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Next on the agenda, Mr. Schaefer. He is online because he couldn't make some flights to connect. Luke, we have until 6 o'clock, and we have a public hearing scheduled at that time that's been noticed, so that's nine minutes. We're going to give you a good start, maybe we'll get done, and if not quite, we might have to shut you off. So, go ahead.
Okay. That sounds, that sounds great to me. Can anybody hear me? I just want to make sure my connection is okay.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. First of all, thanks for the time today. I'm Luke Schaefer, owner and founder of Indy Country Fest, the country music festival that happens out in New Salem every year. And what we, what I am coming to the commission with today is just requesting a letter of support for North Dakota's, the State's Destination Development Grant. We will be applying for that grant, which happens every year, which is, which is more focused on overnight things that can help develop the area, or overnight stays in operations where we operate, which obviously are, we're in Morton County and right there in New Salem. So to just give you a quick overview, we're in New Salem. This is our eighth year into the festival, where folks from all over the country come, and obviously all over North Dakota. What we are looking for is when this application is where we would enhance the area for more camping with, like, electrical. What that would also do would open up that opportunity for other things that happen in that area, such as the Morton County Fair, such as the rodeos that happen there from high school and so on, and then also other activities that happen in the area. We would utilize that as a year-round access for folks, too, so it would also help with overnight stays, not only in the county, but in the city and the area of New Salem. With that application, we would definitely be looking to add to that experience. Obviously, what'd help us with the festival and the things, because folks that come and stay during that time during our festival, we definitely are looking for those type of experiences to spend time while they're at our show, but also prior and after the show, to stay longer. But those are the things that we're looking for. We're looking, in that application, looks for, they're looking for letters of support from, from certain areas that would support the, support the growth and what we're trying to do with that grant. And that's what I'm just asking for today, would be the support of the commission for our application to help develop that area with some more overnight camping and electric camping that could be utilized all year round.
Mr. Schaefer, when is the grant due?
It opened, the portal did open up and then close down, but then it actually is due. We're looking for a letter of experience that would be, a letter of support, not experience, support by August 1st.
August 1st?
As of right now, we're in the process of gathering all of our information for the grant with letters of support and such, and then obviously our mockups and things, that what we're doing right now.
Commissioners, have any questions for Luke?
Mr. Chairman, is there, who's all, who else is all submitting? Is this a new grant, or is this something that's?
No.
Because I had heard that the Fair Board was going to submit to some kind of a grant as well. Is that something different?
That was different. That was the Fair Resiliency Act, or Grant, and we did receive funding from that for your-
Mr. Chair, pull up the grant itself on, online, North Dakota Tourism website. The grant portal opens August 1 and closes September 1, but all application submissions must be done online, which, of course, that's all on Country Fest if they wish to apply for that. But I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So Luke, first off, thanks for being here. Thanks for presenting with this, but adding in, so looking at in the last eight years on the camping side particularly, how's the camping increased in numbers?
Oh, it's increased tremendously. You know, we're growing festival right now, and still in that world and in that industry, we're still a baby festival, but yet we do quite a few guests and quite a few camping, as you know. From the earlier on stages, we only had about maybe 200 total campsites, and as the years have grown, I mean, just alone right now, out in that one campground, which we have two of them, one's in the Morton County Fairgrounds, I'm not talking about that land. There's lands just across Calroad, which you're all probably familiar with, it's on the other side of the interstate. That's where I'm talking about where we would enhance that. Earlier on, maybe there was 50 there, now there is 700 and some campers in that, during our festival, right, sites. So that's where people are coming in with their campers from all over the country, but also obviously the state, and that's where they are. And that's all that's called right now, hook-up primitive camp, meaning that there's no hookups, there's no nothing, they're all self-contained. So they have their generators and whatnot, there are no real amenities. It's obviously a well-groomed field and cut-down road for them, but it has grown tremendously over the years, and we're looking, obviously, to grow that experience, too. As the years go, there'll be more and more folks that'll be requesting camping. And to, to enhance that is to give them those amenities that they're looking for, so they can stay longer and then also feel a lot more comfortable in our space while they're visiting.
So, Mr. Chair, adding to that and tying in with the festival experience, so my wife and I, and Luke and I had dialogue about this a couple of days ago as well, but my wife and I, just last weekend, we were in Sioux Falls for Rock the Country at the WH Lions Fairground, ginormous amount of campers there, and about 30,000 plus in attendance at that festival. Last year, my wife and I also went to Phoenix for Country Thunder. That was approximately 30,000 to 40,000 people per night for four nights, and again, the economic impact, because, I mean, us, we went down, or how many dollars did we spend down there? So that's one of the reasons why I bring that question up, but also adding to that, if I may, two more questions. So looking at the New Salem Mandan Metro area, how many, what's your percentage of attendance that are outside of that metro area? And what is the attendance, if you have those numbers, what's the attendance from outside of North Dakota?
So attendance in the, the, did you say outside of Vismark and Mandan?
The New Salem Mandan Metro area.
New Salem, New Salem Metro outside area.
Outside the metro area.
Outside of it? Outside of it is about 40%. Outside of North Dakota, there's probably, not exactly, but it's right around 15% come from outside of the reef, outside of the state. It's probably 15%.
Okay.
So those folks are flying in, those folks are driving in, those folks are bringing in campers. This, and we also bring in people all the way from Canada as well, so.
Commissioners, have any other questions for Luke?
Make a motion if we're ready.
Are you willing to help write this?
Yes.
Because I'm going to be at the state fair for the next four days.
I would be. I'd make a motion that the Morton County Commission author or pen a letter of support to the North Dakota Country Fest in support of the North Dakota Destination Development Grant Program.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to have Morton County Commission write a letter of support for the North Dakota Destination Development Grant for Country Fest. Is there any discussion? for the North Dakota Destination Development Grant for Country Fest. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Luke.
Thank you all. Appreciate the time and, and the support. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, it is, I think we're just at 6 o'clock yet on my phone, so I'm gonna have Aaron come up and kinda go through a few things, and then we'll open the public hearing for any comments.
Okay, Aaron Orata, I'm the Administrator at Western Plains Public Health. I do have our annual report to hand out. Don, did you, does everybody have the budget and then the opioid letters?
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, opioid letter? I didn't see that.
Okay. I was just gonna provide a quick update if I can. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll hand that out too.
Did anybody find your tab for Custer, or, sorry, Western Plains?
Western Plains, come on.
Page 36. One of my employees just did that yesterday, so it's fine.
It's been long enough now.
I've known the other way longer than this way, I'm sorry.
Yep, I know.
Thank you.
Remember getting my shots. At Custer District.
Okay.
If you don't have enough, I can see, if you can skip me.
I do have some.
I don't need one.
We did get another payment a while back. I have like less than $2,000 that I think or some, so. Kathy included in the monthly payment, won't she?
Give that, give them to me.
Thank you.
All right, I am here to present our 2026 budget request for Western Plains Public Health, and I will direct you to the county section. And I worked with Don, so thank you, Don, for your assistance, just to see how much of an increase I should ask for compared to the other departments that you guys work with for your budget, knowing that you are under the 3% cap for property taxes. And so I am only increasing the mill levy request from all five counties by 3%, which is about $70,000 total for all five counties. Of course, the majority of that falls on Morton County, given the population and the evaluation of your county. And so it is about a $50,000 increase for Morton County. The equalized levy is 3.74, and that is $808,443 request from Morton County. And I'll just kinda go through some of the different aspects of our budget. Overall, the budget was very challenging this year. I'm sure Jackie can expand on that later if you have questions, but we did lose a significant amount of funding very abruptly in March. That was supposed to offset our costs for a lot longer than it did, so that was unfortunate. We had to do some shifting there. A variety of other federal funding sources were significantly delayed this summer. We usually get in all of our grants in June, and those are starting to trickle in now, so our budget looks a little bit better than it did when our board met the end of June. We approved this budget not really knowing if some of those grants were going to come through or not. And because we have some shortfalls, I am looking at doing a 25% fee increase for all of our programming that we charge fees for. The majority of those are environmental health programs. We trimmed our expenses as much as we could, but we already run on a pretty minimal budget to begin with, so that was challenging. And then the board did have a very thorough discussion about still providing a raise for our employees, because we know training new staff is extremely costly, and we would like to retain all of our current employees, 'cause we are fully staffed right now. So we are looking at a 75 cent raise. I'm looking at determining if there are other nursing programs that we implement that we could bill Medicaid for and other insurances, so that's a process that we are currently doing, and then just, I plan to evaluate the rest of our programs to measure impact for our communities and available funding. So that's what I'll be doing for the rest of the year. Likely, this budget will look different before the end of the year, but the county section, of course, will stay the same. And then I did want to mention that all of the 28 health units did ask for an increase in state aid at the legislative session. We currently get $8 million for the, all 28 health units. We were asking for 10, they did not approve that, but they kept us at 8 million, so at least we did not see a reduction. And then I also wanted to add that we added a few programs to our environmental health department. So we now are inspecting mobile home parks and RV campgrounds, as well as lodging facilities. That used to be something that the state did, and we just wanted to coordinate better with our communities. It has had significant impacts in Mandan. We're doing coordinated inspections for the mobile home parks, and we're seeing some successes there. So I believe that was a really good addition to our programming, and if you have any questions about that, feel free to let me know. So that is about our budget. I wanted to provide an update about the opioid funding too, because it's been a little over a year since we had our initial discussion. And so opioid settlement, I have to submit an annual plan online, and there's a state website that has all of those plans, just so that the state understands how we are working with our counties to implement that funding and make improvements in our communities. We developed a youth opioid prevention campaign with CAT and Company, and then we implement, we implemented that in some of our other county schools. We are trying to work with Glenall and Hebron and New Salem to implement that programming in their schools this coming year. And then future planning would be to continue to support our peer-to-peer support specialists at our office. We work with BACIT Together to provide support to our community members. We are looking at doing more community take-back events, leave behind kits for sheriff, fire, and ambulance. And then we're also working on doing some mini-grant applications if there are organizations in our county that would like to utilize this funding as well. And I believe that is about it for my presentation. If anybody has any questions, I would love to answer them.
Commissioners have a quick question for Aaron before I open the public hearing?
Just, just a question, again, you stated about doing the inspections for the mobile home parks. That was started this year?
We started January 1st.
Okay. I'm just curious, 'cause I'm watching the track on that.
Okay. Okay, seeing no other questions at the moment, we will open it back up after we're done again. I will open the public hearing for the Western Plains Public Health 2026 Budget, and ask, are there any public comments from the audience? Any public comments? And ask online also, is there any public comments from online? Seeing none, I'll do a third and final call from the audience. Is there any comments from the audience? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment period.
And if I could, one quick reminder for our joint board meeting.
Yeah, I will be in Michigan and unable to call you.
Well, I might call you. Just kidding. If I could get a quorum of you guys, that would be fantastic. It went really well last year. If I remember correctly, Commissioner Zach Meier joined us. We always love having him in the office, so I just need three of you for five minutes on August 19th at 10:00 a.m. I will be sending Don the connection information. You can join us in the office or call or join virtually through Teams, and I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you so much for your time. Have a great evening.
Any other comments or questions for Aaron? No, looks good. Thank you, Aaron. Next is Debbie Lafferty, Morton County Council on Aging Budget Request.
Chairman Bain, Commissioners, Don. My name is Debbie Lafferty, and I'm the Executive Director of the Morton County Council on Aging. Morton County Council on Aging supports programs and services for seniors in Morton County. These programs and services include a senior nutrition program, transportation, information and referrals, senior center maintenance, and volunteerism. The primary program run through the Morton County Council on Aging is the Senior Nutrition Program, and we have six communities in the county where the meals are provided, and they are in Elmont, Flasher, Glenall, and Hebron, Mandan, and New Salem. I just wanna start by giving you a quick update on what is happening with the Senior Nutrition Program in Morton County. Last year, we made some changes in the way we implemented the program in a few of our rural sites, and fiscally, these changes had a positive impact on the viability and sustainability of the program for the smaller senior center. Our efforts to make the Senior Nutrition Program better is an ongoing process, and we continue to look for ways to improve both the quality and efficiency of the program. On August 1, we will be partnering with the Brick City Public House in Hebron. The Brick City Public House will prepare the meals for the Senior Nutrition Program for individuals in both Hebron and Glenall. In addition to that, they will offer select meals on their menu for seniors who want to dine in the restaurant. These select meals will be offered under the Senior Nutrition Program at the suggested contribution rate. This is an exciting change for us, as we feel this is a win for the program, for the community, and most importantly, for the seniors we serve. The partnership with Brick City Public House helps alleviate some of the pressure on the Mandan kitchen staff, as they have been preparing the meals for Glenall and Hebron for the past 16 months. The Mandan staff will continue to prepare the meals for Elmont and New Salem. The Senior Nutrition Program in the Mandan community continues to grow. Just last week, we added a third site in Mandan. Meadowlands, a 55-plus community, will be receiving meals for congregate, dining, takeout, and home-delivered meals. But even with all the growth and partnerships, we experienced setbacks also. At the end of this month, we will no longer be partnering with the Brandon Bar and Grill in Flasher. They no longer have the resources, specifically enough employees, to continue to provide the Senior Nutrition Program to the individuals in that community. The program will continue to be available to seniors in Flasher, but it'll be in the form of frozen meals until we can get something else arranged. As far as our 2026 budget, I believe Don has a copy of a side-by-side budget of 2025 current budget and our proposed 2026 budget. First of all, I just wanna say our budget is based on projections, and with some of the new changes we just implemented or are yet to implement to the Senior Nutrition Program, it is hard to know what 2026 will look like. We projected a 4% increase in the number of meals we will serve in 2026, and adjusted the federal funding according to that number. But even with the changes we have made or will be making soon, the proposed budget has remained pretty close to our 2025 budget. I'm optimistic. I think the partnership with the Brick City Public House will increase the participation in the Senior Nutrition Program, which will inevitably increase revenue, but it's, but it is hard to project an exact number, so we project it cautiously. As far as expenses going into 2026, we did budget a 3% increase in wages, but again, with that partnership with the Brick City Public House, that allowed us to eliminate one position and reduce the hours of another employee, so it saved us some money. So this increase does not impact that budgeted amount for wages by much. But with that being said, the increase you see in payroll is primarily for an additional position to be awarded towards the end of 2026. This position will be filled as we start a succession, succession plan for the director position. As I mentioned before, the Senior Nutrition Program is growing, and we are seeing some unprecedented numbers in meals we serve. Because of that growth, though, we are able to absorb some unbudgeted expenses. This year, for example, when the transportation plan we set up to transport hot meals from Mandan to the rural communities was no longer an option, we had to make some adjustments. These adjustments resulted in us purchasing a vehicle and hiring a driver to transport those meals to the rural communities. The outlook for the future is promising. I'll give you some numbers. In 2023, we serve 76,303 meals. In 2024, we serve 76,531 meals, and the trajectory we're on for 2025 will have us serving well over 76,000 meals again. And quite honestly, I believe with the partnership with Brick City Public Housing and setting up that third site in Mandan, I think the number of meals we serve in 2025 is gonna be closer to that 80,000. And as I state every year, I believe that the changes that we made were changes needed to ensure the senior population in Morton County continued to receive the services they need in the most efficient, cost-effective manner. The senior programs are evolving, and the programs run through the Morton County Council on Aging are no exception. As we move forward and see our programs grow, due to more baby boomers pop, entering the senior programming, we will adjust and make some necessary changes to make sure that everyone's needs are met, both in Mandan and in the rural communities. With that being said, we are respectfully asking the County Commission for the equivalent of one meal, which will trigger the state match for a total of $453,000. And with that, I would be happy to address any questions, if anybody has any, for me.
Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add some comments, and I think Deb touched on this briefly, but again, kudos to Deb's efforts, the efforts of her staff, along with the, the Board for the Council of the Aging. Some of our satellite locations were running in significant deficits. We're talking almost five-digit deficits. Five-digit dollar deficits, and just this year alone, that's been called back to a break-even at, at a minimum, a break-even, all within the last, what, what'd he say, seven months?
Yeah, since January 1st was the first time we, all of our sites broke at least even, if not a little bit in the black.
Mm-hmm. And the efforts for this, the Council of the Aging, and we're trying to emphasize the need for the funding, it, it helps provide services to our senior population, many of whom take this as an opportunity to maintain their independence, take this as an opportunity to maintain their integrity with, with their own well-being, their, their, their self-worth, as well as allows them to be part of a community when those opportunities come into play. So again, you're looking at quality of place for, for a very specific population that has definitely served their, served their time.
Any further comments or questions for Debbie? They're all shaking their head. No, you did a good job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Barb Sandstrom with Mandan, Morton Mandan Library.
Commissioner, your library is tab 37. Good evening, Commissioners and County Auditorium. Don Roan, I'm just here tonight to thank you, number one, for the time and for the county's ongoing support of Morton Mandan Public Library, or MMPL. Yes, we know today is about numbers, but to me, it's also about, our focus is on the residents of Morton Mandan Public, or Morton County, who rely on the library and the Bookmobile Morty as their connection to learning, opportunity, and community. So one thing that we do, we might be located as the building in Mandan, but our services go throughout the whole county. We are constantly going back and forth, so all of, not just our Bookmobile staff, but also our community engagement staff, is engaging with outer communities as well, and it's just been wonderful to see that dynamics happening. So we are looking or anticipating, so passport days, we're gonna be offering in Glenall this next coming year. We go twice a month to all of the stops within Morton County. We have some, we are providing a lot more digital learning tools, whether it's Beanstack. We have News Bank, so people can access newspapers online, local newspapers, and we are looking at another aspect of NISH Academy, which would allow them to learn skills, technology skills, as well as connect with some of the programs that we might offer in-house at the library, but people can check out, out in the county and still participate. We have a very, very dynamic team, and we are constantly looking for ways to just make our, our presence known and grown throughout the community and the county. So what gives is, we are asking for $270,000, or $270,912, plus the $14,438 that will be coming from the North Dakota State Library. That is about 27.5% of our, of the budget that comes between, or split, I should say, between the city of Mandan, who pays 72.5, and the county. I think for all of that money, we're providing some powerful things. We also look, because we have such a great group, that we are really looking at ways that we can generate our own income and kinda lighten the load on taxpayers and, and the county and the city commissioners. So we, you know that we offer passports, and we have been just skyrocketing with passports this year. I don't know, it's just unbelievable, the numbers we're seeing. We also include photo services. We're gonna add digital services, so right now you can, anybody who needs to renew a passport can do it online. The struggle is with the photo. So what we plan on doing now is just, they can come to us, get their photo, and we will digitally send it to them, so they can just upload it, and they know that it's gonna be a high-quality photo. We have our meeting rooms, of course, but we are also looking at other ways that we can expand, such as printing services and offering that even through the Bookmobile. They plan on purchasing a printer that they can help if there are residents out in the county who need papers printed off or copied off. county who need papers printed off or copied off. Let's see, what else? We, the 2026 budget was difficult, partly for me. It was knowing there was an extra pay period or another 54 weeks versus the 52 weeks. That really just threw me for a loop. So we are really looking at cutting some of our costs, like in programming, and looking for support through the Friends of the Library, donations, and other sponsorships. We also have cut kind of our library materials because we are targeting with this collection analysis that we are doing and just making sure that what we are getting is of value to all people who come into our building or on the Bookmobile. At this time, the expected COLA raise is 3%. That's based off the city. And we don't anticipate any full-time positions. We might expand some hours of people who are 20 to 29, up to 35 hours. That was anticipated within the budget. That is what I have at this moment. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioners, have any questions for Barb?
I do, Mr. Chair. On the revenues, I'll get the right line here. Meeting room rentals.
Yes.
So 24 actuals, just shy of three, 25 estimated is at 32, but yet your projection is...
Yes, so I know, I know. It's kind of crazy. And here's what Nathan and I have talked to. We have not done a very good job of advertising that we have spaces for people to rent. Or when they hear the name "meeting space," you think it's just for a meeting, right? But we have had groom's suppers in our spaces. We've had celebration of lives, life in our spaces. So we're going to kind of expand, number one, that we're more of a venue than we are just meeting spaces. And we are actively, really going to be pushing advertising and marketing all of these spaces that we have. That's like number one on the list.
Personal belief is a space of that size is very hard to come by in this community.
Yes, it is.
And we looked at some of the rates that are there, too. We were quite a bit lower than we were compared to other places.
Making it more attractive.
So still staying very competitive, if not even a little bit lower yet than some of the other ones.
And so we do anticipate adding like a setup takedown fee kind of within that, so that was included. And then also, if people need technology support, whether it's equipment or even staff assistance, adding a little bit of charge to that as well. Because we've had, staff has helped out a lot for different people who are coming in. So those are some components that we're adding. But yes, it is the marketing. People don't know, they don't even know where to find the library still, so we're still trying to change that, let alone the rooms inside.
Well, I just want to add another comment, just I commend the library, the Morton Mandan Library as a whole, for the efforts that you've been doing since, shoot, since the redo of the library.
Yeah, again, we have a, just a dynamic team of people, and they are always looking for ways to enhance, you know, our services to people, whether it is free or paid, but also to limit what is on our shoulders, because we know we can't keep hiring people all of the time. That just doesn't work. But yet, we can't work around the clock either, so yeah, we've just got some great thinkers.
And just a comment, since I took over that portfolio from Commissioner Buckley after she termed out, there's a lot of things I didn't know about the library and how it operates that you get in there and explore and check it out. It's worth it.
We're a fun place.
Any other questions for Barb? Not seeing any. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Mr. Bill Robinson, Lower Heart Water Board.
Lower Heart is the second to the last, it's right after the library, next one, 38.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, and Dawn. Our Lower Heart's request is for, same as the year prior, four meals. To give you an update to where we're at since this time last year, a couple of things have been added to the flood risk reduction plan, which is our biggest lift that we're dealing with financially. FEMA was asking for some additional structural support to the levee and the golf course reach. So that resulted, after looking at several different options, we're going to put a tow trench along the levee. Basically, it keeps the golf course intact. The other, one of the other options basically would have probably ended municipal golf course effectively. You still could have played out there, but it would have been a whole different animal along that levee. They were looking for a stability berm that ran out about 50 feet into the playing area. That would have been about five, six feet high. So you would have effectively...
And just after they celebrated their anniversary, right?
That's right. So we were able to come up with a plan that, I think after one or two playing seasons, it'll be almost no impact. It takes up about 16 feet at the toe of the levee for, I think about a 400-yard reach, but very minimal impact long-term. And long-term maintenance is a lot less. It took a little searching to come up with that plan. I wound up on a phone call with folks from across the river from Omaha, on some bluffs. They have a tow trench on their golf course, and that's how they resolved it from the Missouri River in their area. It's not a common tool used, I think, in the Omaha district. It's one of, like, two that are used in the Omaha Corps of Engineer district. So it's not a common thing. They do say it's effective, however, not as effective as just laying down a blanket of dirt was what we were originally looking at. Another thing that's come up here in the last few weeks is some additional riprap will be needed, and it'll go between the two bridges, the Highway 6, 1804 bridges in the Meadow Park area. Over the last two heavy runoffs, there's been a little bank slough on what would be the city side of the river. So they're asking for some armoring there. So those are the two bigger-dollar things that were added since that time. The engineers have had a meeting with FEMA roughly two weeks ago, so FEMA is in the loop of what our application should look like. We're hoping to get a 75% plan to FEMA sometime during the first week of August or the first half of August. And with that, if they're fine with the plan, then we'll move ahead. What we have done cost-wise and financially, so we, since this time, we have been approved for FMA grant flood mitigation assistance grant from FEMA. We just submitted our first reimbursement request from them here a couple of weeks ago. So what'll happen, because we did it in arrears on dollars that we spent on engineering, and on those dollars we've been spending on engineering, we've been getting cost share from the state. So when we receive the federal funds, we have to reimburse a portion back to the state and then reapply for the non-federal dollars that we spent. So there will be a step here sometime in the second half of this year to finish that up. But we are dipping into that going forward. So what you see on this budget for 2026, we had a budget of nearly $1.8 million. When you subtract out what should be reimbursable, it's about $540,000 left in expenses that we'd be dealing with. The cost share from the State Water Commission and FEMA is definitely critical on this. We, in this fiscal year, we did get down to, for Lower Heart, we basically did get down to fumes until reimbursement money was coming in. And we'll probably have one of those moments here during construction, I suspect. So I would say we got a, between today, we probably have 24 months of similar scenario. With that, I'll take in questions.
So we're in Phase 3, Phase 2?
Phase 3 is construction, so we're not there.
Not quite there yet.
Not quite there. FEMA has to approve the 75% plan. Then we need to submit those improvements to the Corps. Because we're working with two federal agencies, it gets quite clumsy. FEMA has to approve the plan for the mapping certification, and however, then we have to construct to the construction standards of the Corps of Engineers. So there's, you have, application processes are periods where both entities or agencies need to review that. Some of it will happen concurrently, but not all of it. So I think at best, with what we have to add into the system right now to improve it, we're probably, best-case scenario, we're looking to take in bids probably spring, early summer of '26.
Commissioners, have any questions for Mr. Bill Robinson?
Got a couple. So assuming this is moving forward with the tow trench on the dry side, of course, because it's on disturbed soils, you just have to go through an environmental assessment?
Yes.
Okay, so that makes it that much quicker for you?
Yes. We have to do the same where the riprap is going also.
Okay. And then just a question, as far as reimbursement, is that going through DES or is that going through the Water Commission?
It goes through DES.
Okay. Because of the FEMA connection?
So the federal funds go through DES, and then I submit requests to the Water Commission for the state portion.
Right, okay. Wouldn't you anticipate the approval to go ahead? How much timeframe are they saying?
With the project itself?
Yeah, how much time are they saying it would take them for review?
That's kind of a moving target. The Corps, the Corps portion is what will probably be the delay. Their staff is to the point where they're not doing 408 reviews as a priority. We can, we can pay up to have a, to have them review it earlier rather than later. So we haven't made a decision on that yet. We don't know what that cost would be. We're still getting estimates, but it's going to be, I think, a minimum of $50,000 to $90,000 to pay up for them to review it quickly. And so what we're going to have to weigh at some point in time here is, is cost of construction. You add another, basically, year to this thing to do construction, does that cost save money on the total project cost? So that's going to be a decision we'll have to make.
I trust you're also working with our congressional?
Any other questions or comments for Bill?
It's a big project that people don't understand the impact of it. I don't feel that they understand it 100%.
No, no, it's a hard topic. You know, we're, I think we've identified 3,300, 3,400 properties that would be impacted. And then just the sheer dollar amount if the mapping comes into effect.
Much less, the other alternative is to do nothing, which isn't an alternative to what that would bring to the community.
Yeah, the education would be swift if the mapping occurs and not nice.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Dawn, waited this long for two abatements.
Yeah, I'll be fairly quick tonight. So the first abatement up is 7131. This is a Veterans Credit going back to 2024. It's in the county. This is a prorated one. The home was purchased on 7/9/24, so we're awarding them six months proration on the Veterans Credit to '24.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve abatement number 7131, prorated for the date of purchase for Veterans Credit abatement.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 7131 for 2024 for Veterans Credit in a prorated six-month abatement. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, the next abatement is 7132. This one came out of my review of parcels in our Zone 5 that we're currently working on this year. This parcel was not on the Morton County map, so I looked into it further. The plot had three lots on it. The third lot appeared to be Lion's Road. So I did run this past our, the parcel manager from Morton County. They kind of agreed that was the case. They did check with the Highway Department and ran it past them. They also agreed that lot three on that plot was Lion's Road and should not be in anybody's name and shouldn't have a value on it either. The value was only $100 true and full, $5 taxable, so this abatement is just to remove that value for 2025, and then we mark that parcel as, well, it'll just disappear.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to recommend approval of abatement number 7132 for reassessment. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve abatement 7132 for 2025 due to reassessment. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Chair, I believe the...
Yeah, we have the wrong...
Most current one, it didn't get printed. Patrick's next.
I was going to say, Patrick's still last on mine. But no, the updated one, we have Patrick next with the emergency manager. Could have left him till the end, but he was enjoying himself, I thought.
I was, I was getting quite the education. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Auditorium. I appreciate your time tonight and your continued support for public safety in our county. I am here to respectfully request approval and formal proclamation recognizing August of 2025 Emergency Management Awareness Month in Morton County. This is a first-time national effort instigated by the International Association of Emergency Managers. Emergency management is one of those professions that often stays behind the scenes until something goes wrong. Our work focuses on building local capacity to prevent, respond to, and recover from disasters, whether it's natural, technological, or human cause. This includes updating emergency operations plans, coordinating disaster response exercises, and assisting public safety efforts at events like the Fourth of July Parade, North Dakota Country Fest, and Buggies and Blues, just to name a few. As well as partnering with fire, EMS, and law enforcement, public health, to strengthen our county's resilience. But we're not alone. There are emergency managers all across North Dakota and the country, working every day to try to keep their communities as safe and resilient as possible. This proclamation isn't just for... This proclamation isn't just for our office, it's for our entire emergency management community, our staff, volunteers, local emergency planning committee, our regional mutual aid partners, and even the unsung individuals acting kind of behind the scenes in preparation for, or in preparedness outreach, grants, and recovery documentation. By recognizing Emergency Management Awareness Month in Morton County affirms the importance of the work people carry out, often long before and long after an incident occurs. I would like to take this time to specifically recognize staff working in our office that makes our program successful on a daily basis. We have Joel Rosberg, our Assistant Director, has been with us for 15 years, been with the county for 15 years. We also have Heidi Hamilton, our GIS and Emergency Management Specialist. And also, she fulfills the duties of the County Public Information Officer. She's been with us for nearly two years. One thing that is kind of unique to Morton County and to the state for that matter is our program where we have the emergency coordinators located throughout the county. Those include Russ Kramer out of Almont, Alicia Semph out of Flasher, Darcy Fitterer out of Glen Olin, Grant Walth and Terry Dawkins out of Hebron, Amy Kruger from New Salem, and Jim Neubauer from Mandan. So, in closing, I just wanted to thank you again for the opportunity to serve Morton County. Recognizing this work formally in August helps elevate public awareness and morale across our entire emergency management network. I respectfully request the Commission to adopt the Emergency Management Awareness Month, August 2025 proclamation as presented. And I will be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, have any questions for Patrick? If not, I'll accept the motion, or one way or the other, if you don't make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the authorization of the County Commission Chair to sign a proclamation designated in August 2025 as Emergency Management Awareness Month.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to have the Chair sign the proclamation designating August 2025 as Emergency Management Awareness Month. Is there any discussion?
Just a comment to say thank you to our emergency management staff as a whole. Long days sometimes.
Do a very good job. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Patrick, do you have a clean copy? The one we have is on the backside, because I'm gonna be gone all week, this week, and next week, so if you want me to sign it.
There's that 440 in that top right corner, is that on that copy?
No.
Okay.
There you go, sir. Just, you can send him a copy up, yeah. Thank you, Patrick. All right, moving on. Kyle, Sheriff Kirk Myers is up. Should I have an order on my sheet, anyway? It's another half hour?
At least, I'm sure.
Well, let's hope not, but we'll see how it goes. So, good evening, Commissioners, Chairman Beam, Audiarone. We're, you know, this, I guess, is this time of year. So, there's a few things to discuss here, not only budgets, but then also the LAC project based on the sales taxes also on the agenda here. So, but I think what we'll do is probably start with the coroner first.
So, those are tabs, starting with tabs. 16 is the coroner, and the sheriff goes back, and the corrections is backwards from there.
Yep.
And there's not a whole lot changing to the coroner. The big thing is ambulance service and what it is for transports. That is always a guess per year on what it actually is and the cost of that. So, that was just increased at $500. And then for also, for services, there are supplies needed for the coroner duties is, was also increased by that $610. So, overall, just $1,110 increase to, of the budget there. But nothing else has really changed too much. And no increase, we're still at $100 a day for the Missouri River Coroner. So, that's an easy one. If, unless you have any questions, we will move on.
Nobody's saying anything.
Okay. Then we go to Corrections.
14.
This is also, here, I don't know if I, unless you really want me to go line by line, but that's why if I went through this and gave you, I guess, the justification sheet you should have with you too, in case you do have any questions on going through this, just to hit the high points of it. But as far as the Corrections budget, there isn't a whole lot of changes. Probably kept it pretty even as far as what we do for food for inmates while they're up there for court. Other supplies, repair and maintenance is the same at this point. Telephone, heat and water is all even. We still have the Capital Building Improvement Fund to add, that was added in 2023, so that has been added in here as well. Supplies, maintenance, computer stuff for the jail office. Medical is still doing, we're still doing fairly well on that because one is that we run all of it through Sanford on our medical and talk to them, and they are giving us a pretty good break on anything that we have incidents that BMDC that we are, as Morton County is responsible for. So, we've been fortunate there at the moment. The big thing is with BMDC and the cost of running the detention center, we had the budget meeting here, it seems like a couple weeks, probably longer than that though, a month ago now, as we were preparing for this budget season. And the good news is, is there is, for 2026, there are projections for more income coming in on the BMDC side, and one related to federal inmates and two related to state inmates that would be housed at BMDC. So, with that, there's a pretty good increase. And it's also almost, if the state contract does go through, and at the moment, it hasn't been totally finalized, but that's about $5 million that would bring as income into the facility, which then gets divided up between Burley County and Morton County as per our percentages. So, with that, as you go through the cost share, that for 2026, it is still at 21%. And then the 1.5 admin fee, so it's 22.5%, which is still on the two years. So, 2025 will remain, is at 22.5. 2026 will remain at 22.5. It'll then be looked at based on the number of percentages per inmates pour between, separated between Burley County and Morton County. And that is, on a two-year average, is how those percentages are figured out. So, that would be looked at again next year at this point on what it would be for the 2027. So, with the overall possible increase in income coming into BMDC, the budget numbers have gone down from 2025 into 2026. And actually, the 2026, we decreased almost by $600,000. And that was, we actually recovered from some of the COVID issues that were going on during 2021 and during that time. So, we're coming back down to normally where we should be. And we average, Burley's right around 180-ish. We're probably about, our average is around that 50, 55 inmates in there at a time. So, with that, the request, due to the income, the total request for the building, the total budget is $13,614,796. But with projected income of almost $7.5 million, that gets split between Burley, they would receive $5.8 million of that. We would receive 1.6 back to come off of, for the budget. So, really, the impact projection is, and this is if the state contract goes through, which isn't 100% right now. And that's why there was a projection of 1.375 million in here for our budget. But actually, I have 1.83. It's $1,830,000, that's exactly what it was here. Yeah, $1,830.61 are $61 due to the fact that we're not 100% sure on the income. If it does work out, we should be sitting fine. But for budget numbers, that's the number that was used. So, we don't have, so we know what we're expecting if those projections do not play out as they could or thoughtful as of right now. So, with that, that is the big thing then that said, when we get into the next year, then that, those numbers will be looked at again for the percentage. The only other thing that changed was what we pay into the joint detention or pay for the, what am I thinking of? The maintenance fee?
Capital fund.
Capital, yeah, the capital fund. That did go up a little bit. We actually adjusted it to what the actual percentage of ownership is and between Burley and Morton County. So, that did increase a little bit for that percentage.
And can I just make a comment on that? So, that is money that we hold here. And then if there's something that comes up that needs to get fixed, then we transfer the money or send a check over to Burley County. But that's this money that we hold here internally for those purposes.
And it stays, and then we, at the BMDC Committee, we meet on that and then go over any expenses, and then that gets approved there, I guess, and then taken to the Commissions if need be after that, for that funding. So, that went up a little bit. Outside boarding is moving on that, stayed even, and then capital outlays even. So, basically, for the 2026 budget, it decreased by about $390,000 at this point from what it was in 2025, or from 2025 to 2026 at this point. So, which is, which is good news on that point because normally, you don't see a decrease, I guess, in correction facilities. But with the income coming in, it helps us as far as the county goes and the taxpayers on our side. So, with that, the budget actually went down almost 16% with those taken out. So, any other questions on BMDC or the Corrections budget?
Sheriff, Mr. Chair, Sheriff, if you don't mind, just do a little clarifying for the Commissioners. So, again, just to reiterate, what Kyle was referencing as far as the COVID, we were being evaluated on a five-year cycle. And in that five-year cycle, there's a huge spike during the COVID years as far as what the detention rate was. So, that has since been settled down to a two-year review, which caused that ratio to settle down a little bit more realistic and more consistent right now.
Which is based on the number of inmates.
Correct. Yep, yep. But also with that, as he alluded to, the law enforcement contract, one of the discussions we had within the Burley-Morton Detention Center Advisory Panel was to readjust the rates for stays. So, federal inmates, federal incarceration would have this rate, state incarceration would have this rate, local PD would have this rate. So, that was an adjustment that's bringing different revenue stream back into the BMDC. So, it allows that offset for the expenses. That's what he's referring to.
Correct. And it was, the rates as far as inmates, one is for the state. The federal, the feds went up. The state also has been, that daily rate increased as far as the cities as well to make sure we cover the costs, because they do have the other pod that's open. And if that remains open, that's where this other income helps in. And then you're possibly looking at other staff. If you're gonna end up more inmates in the facility, you would have to be adjusted on that end of it. But right now, it's, I think we'll be looking pretty good for next year, or at least for 2026, as it plays out right now.
Mr. Chairman, when do you think you'll know about the state contract to bring more prisoners in?
Well, that should actually be coming here fairly soon because they're into their new.
They're into their new year.
Into their new year. So, that hasn't been 100% verified yet, but I'm pretty sure that that will take place because the state needs beds, and they're looking for beds. And this is one place that they can do it without putting up more buildings and use a building that's already existent.
So, there's no plan to add on at their facility, right? I didn't hear anything about any indication.
Not at this point, unless they start talking in the next session. But they're looking for, I guess, outsourcing some of it instead of building because, I don't know, I don't know if you can build your way out of it or not.
The situation you're in, sorry, the situation you're in right now is at least four to six years in the running because till they go through session, do the planning, and build anything, you're six years out.
And one thing that Kyle is addressing is the fact that there is an open pod that's, right now, is not popular, has been reserved for the expansion, inmate expansion. And that's where that conversation's coming into play, is if there's an opportunity. How many beds are in that pod?
There are about 120 a pod. So, you know, there is, there's a whole open pod that has nothing in it. So, I mean, that, these are all discussions for the future and on what that's gonna bring and what the state's gonna do as far as inmate population and hopefully the overall rate of inmates decreases for the right reason, for less crime, which would be good, and not more, as far as that goes. And then, you know, there's also, and we had this discussion here the other day, and it's coming up again here, with juvenile detention is obviously an issue in North Dakota and what we're doing and where it's gonna go, where we're at. I mean, probably, well, it's as good as any place to talk about it. But, you know, as far as the costs out at YCC, we are getting, well, the right word, hammered and on as far as the costs that are, monthly costs that are out there on a, I mean, on 2025, for example, we have a $60,000 budget. We're at $207,000, and we're only halfway through the year. through the year. So that is, that hurts. And, you know, I've been talking with Juvenile Court, with the State Strangers Office, was trying to find out what, so these juveniles, so we can get them moved to the system. Some of them need to be there and one of them that's there right now needs to be there. But there's, I don't know what the long-term answer is for this, for, for costs. But right now, from talking with, you know, Association of Counties and the juveniles services is that, I don't know, there's no answer, but we're, we're trying to figure out what, what this is gonna look like in the future and what the state is gonna, gonna do as far as on that end and what the counties have to do. Because if, you know, through the feel through the legislature this year, a lot of this was, you know, put it back on the counties, put it back on the counties. Well, you can only do that so much. And then we're, we're just trying to figure out another way. And we have some meetings coming up actually with Juvenile Court and Juvenile Services with, with Association of Counties and see which way that we can take this. And right now, there's more questions than answers on as far as juveniles in the facilities go. Because there's a very limited number of beds with that. And, and then when you do need a bed, they may be full or they may, there's none available. And then you have issues between youth works that there's only certain ones they can take. So it, it's an issue that we, we kind of struggle with as we go through the process. And I don't know the answer to the bill. I mean, the, it, and I, I kind of got at him, I, you know, with the, with the cost of that because I thought 284 dollars a day was high, but now it's almost 600 dollars a day. And we have three that have been in there for an extended period of time and a couple of them that probably are gonna be there a while yet. So, so just, so, you know, when the, when the, when the bills come, you know where we're at.
Yeah, we're running into the same thing with the social services budget too, when we have to send youth out there or we can't find a bed for one and it's costing a lot of money.
Yeah, and right now, I just, I don't know, I don't know if there's a good answer out there.
Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't, I would like to recognize the efforts of Sheriff Leibin in Burley County and Sheriff Kirkmire in Morton County on optimizing the, the level of inmates you're pursuing with that facility and increasing the revenue stream. It's, it's a, it's a big mover of the budget. And also the efforts you've made in reducing the incarceration rates coming from Morton County also. And I know there's, there's some, a lot of work put into that.
Well, when you, when you have a 13 million dollar budget, you know, for that building, it's, it's, it's nice to see some other revenue. We're, we look at all the options to, to make that viable for both counties as we move forward, but yet have the correctional facilities we need to, to take care of the issues. But it's a budget number that went down on that end, so that's. So if there's no questions on that, we will move on to dispatch or security control.
Which should be number 18.
And really with this, we're staying pretty stable. We have a, a good group of three individuals over there that have been, been steady in their longevity there. So we haven't had a lot of issues with, with anything as far as even turnover. They're doing a very good job in, in keeping that running very well. They also help out with, you know, doing the warrant paperwork, NCIC, following up the State Strangers Office and doing a bunch of other stuff as, as well as, as answering all incoming calls and coming into the sheriff's office and, and then providing the, the court security and overwatch for the, for the jail or the holding facilities too when, when inmates are in there. So the salaries have just been, that was just increased as, as per the discussion of the commission. In, in my budget justifications, you can see the, the, the orange ones are highlighted. That's the one that, the numbers that Don has put together referenced the salaries and budgets. There's been no increase in that or requests to, to change that for me at this point, for them. Then everything else, maintenance, mobile communications, telephone, you got machine maintenance, that's for the inlets contract and for all of the, for the equipment contract as well. And it also, then tower and radio maintenance, that did increase by 1,000 because that, that goes up every, all the costs are not coming down as far as the maintenance is coming up to make sure that these towers are up and running. Office supplies are even, computer supplies are a $500 increase. Capital outlay was even, copier expenses even. We have a, a contract with ABM on, on that. So there is the overall increase of the, of that budget from 15,000, 16 dollars and 66 cents. That is with the proposed salary increase and then operational increase of, of 3,000. And most of that is because of basically supplies and tower maintenance with that. So overall, a $3,000 increase from, from 2025. So then the other thing that I've talked about as we get into the, the 911 funding is also with this, is that the 911 funding pays state radio DES for our emergency dispatch. So right now, that effective July 1st of 2025, that increased to 159 a line. And it goes by the number of phone lines that the county has, whether it's mobile or landlines. And that is now figured out by, we used to, Don used to do it more in a manual way, I guess.
I still do.
You still do and you send it to the Association of Counties.
Well, I, I get it. I get the data from the Association of Counties because all the telecoms give the money, send the money to the Association of Counties across the state. And then they give us a report every month saying how many lines there were by telecom providers. And then I have to take a percentage of that and give it to the city for their share based on population. And then I report the number of lines that the county has for our share to DES and then they bill us.
And then DES sends out, sends out the bill.
Real streamlined process.
In a roundabout way, it gets done, but yeah, I don't know.
Efficiencies of government.
Based on, based on phone lines. So with that, we're looking at probably 2026 for, for state radio for the, about 198,000. For 2026, which is what, works out to about 16,500 a year.
And that, for your information commissioners, is in the E911 fund where that comes, that money comes into and out of. So that's under tab 30 and yeah, I have 196,000 is what I have budgeted for the state radio fees.
Well, we're pretty close then.
Yep.
So hopefully a few less landlines or cellphones and we'll, then we'll be all right. So with that, there's really no other changes except I think, do I have in here the first quarter? Yeah, it just went up to 159 for 25, 27. So we're good for a couple of years at the 159 rate. So if you, that would pretty much take care of security control and the 911 if, if you don't have any other questions. There is some other information that I do have on there for past years for 2024, 2023 and kind of the history of, of where that 911 fees have gone up from. If nothing there, we will move to the sheriff. So with that, for the 2026 sheriff's office budget is for salaries. Right now, there is the same thing as what is highlighted in orange there in the, in the justifications is what the auditor has put together for, for costs with the proposed salary increase. I, I didn't put this in there, but if, as, as we go through discussions, I would like to add if there'd be $10,000 in that line because there are some salary adjustments I'd like to do for the court security that didn't happen last year. So $10,000 would add, it's like $4.80 and that would get split up amongst some of us to do some other salary adjustments for some of those other officers that, that are still deserve to, to, to see that little bit of a, of an increase yet. So as we move on there, everything else, as you go through the justifications, the standby salaries, that is being held at, at 25 a day. That's all the on-call. The next ones, game and fish, response pay, DUI grant, these are occupational protection, distracting driving, speed enforcement, underage drinking, those are all, they decreased but in, as far as their grant goes, but that's all, I guess, returning income for, well, reimbursed income, I should say, as, as they go through it. So for those dollars, for the grant dollars. And outlining deputy would be the, the same. Mantiff, that's just the DOJ reimbursement from, from the task force. And, and still in 2026, there is no match for Mantiff at this point for the task force. So the lottery grant is still taken, is covering most of the, the task force costs at this point. That and asset forfeiture funds between state, state asset forfeiture and federal asset forfeiture is keeping the, the task force running along with the lottery funding. Then we go down to chaplaincy services. Those are even overtime pay, I did increase that by, by 2,000. And as I'm thinking, I'm just wondering, Country Fest got me thinking that there was a, we had our, Country Fest, I can say overall was, was good. We did have some issues. I know three assaults happened on one night, that type, we had some of that. We also had a, a lady who's that broke her wrist, some other little incidences that There's only a couple arrests that was made on juveniles as far as drinking and then there are also false IDs that were also made. And having those ID checkers on scene or out there is making a big difference in trying to get the number of, of false IDs that are coming into Country Fest from this year to last year is, has decreased a lot. So it's, it's doing its purpose, but that gets, that gets me to thinking on the, the amount of, one is if, this is kind of a different discussion too, but I'm in it here at the moment. But, but because of, of Country Fest and, and what they want to do in the future and if they want to keep growing and keep, keep doing that, we're gonna have to look at, at making sure we're providing the, the proper amount of manpower out there. And at times, I don't know if we do. And I was also looking at maybe in 2026 to add some outside help from other counties or deputies to come in and, and do some of this. So with, as Country Fest is growing, we have a few more issues. The ID readers, the, the ID checkers, scanners actually helped to reduce some of the juveniles inside. Now we got more juveniles drinking out in the parking lots. So we want to be able to, we, we kind of gotta go out there and look at, I guess, balancing between what we do inside Country Fest to keep that safe as well as what's going on in the grand scheme of parking lots and campgrounds as this, if it does get bigger and it increases, it's just, it's to be a bigger issue. So I only increased it, that, you know, thinking about that, but this is more of a conversation to be, be held as, as we looking at the, the numbers.
So Sheriff, the, the county fair hires a firm we pay for ourselves out of Minnesota. Does Country Fest could hire additional security to help out?
They, they have to. They have to hire their own.
Yeah.
And they may have to add some, some individuals too. I know just as an example, one individual actually jumped the fence, went backstage and was going through some of the coolers of some of the, of, I guess, the, the singers that were up there, the groups that were up there. And, and security did catch them when they were going through the coolers. Guy took off, jumped the fence, ran down Cow Road and it caught him, you know, down at that point. But those are just some of the instances that we're having. Plus, we had a, probably a group of, and this is more of a Country Fest issue than necessarily a, a law enforcement issue on that side, but they had a group of 100-plus kids that went over the fence, you know, also. So there, there's things that need to be worked on as we're, as we're going through here. But there's, it's getting better than it was at the, you know, you know, when Country Fest first started and, and that process. But there is still issues and I think things that we gotta look at to help shore some things up here a little bit. But kind of got off the subject a little bit, but since I was on it, but it's still, for the overtime, that's where that comes in. But, and yes, we did have an unfortunate incident where we have radios, you know, that, and just as another quick side note is that Siren, we actually have the, we're up and running on Siren. The towers are all running here. We use Siren out at Country Fest. Basically, it's the, the digital channels from the state and it works. It works very well. We can, I can actually, from Mandan, sit on a portable and talk to them, to a deputy out in the sale. And actually, we're doing some testing yesterday because they do have, now they do have North Flasher on, Antelope and Hebron. So as Lieutenant Murphy was out testing yesterday, I was on a portable here in Mandan. I could talk to him from here, south of Hebron. So it, it solves a lot of problems in, as far as communication and it does work. But now we're in the stage to where we need state radio to come online. We're about ready on our side to go if we, to switch over when we, when we can. But now it's on the state side to make sure one of state radios ready and they have the ability to do that. So with that, during that discussion, it, it, the, the radios definitely helped. But we had a security radio that we also use between, so we can talk between the law enforcement and security out there, which is the private security. It's a, a company out of Minne, out of Minnesota. And anyway, one of the deputies did leave a radio on top of their car, drove off and we found it later run over and, and hence the reimbursement for the, the radio for Country Fest, which sometimes those happen in doing business, but we want to limit that as much as we can, obviously. So moving on here, as far as the overtime, sheriff court has increased a little bit. For some reason, we seem like we're, we are spending a little more time in court and coming in on, on the deputies when they're off. With as far as scheduling has always been an issue to try to get all that evened out as far as maintaining the shifts and, and getting to court when we need to. Country Fest, I do have on there that increased this 500 dollars and, and thinking back at that, that's probably not enough, but we are where we are for, we'll have to look at that as, as Country Fest moves forward here.
Mr. Chairman, if I can jump in on that one. Kyle, on the peak periods of Country Fest, if you want to disclose, how many officers you got on site?
14.
During the peak periods?
Yeah.
And how, how long of a timeframe?
Eight-hour shifts.
Okay.
And that, so there's, so there's difference between days. And days, we back it down a little bit so we can get more people there. a little bit so we can get more people there. As far as Country Fest, I'm guessing, Country Fest numbers are a little higher, but I don't know if I buy into all the all the numbers.
Yeah, I've seen the reports.
I'm guessing, you know, it's between that, that, in my estimation, between, you know, maybe up to fifteen, you know, that that type of thing, but it's a, it's a lot of individuals, and for the most part, everybody wants to be there and does and does very well. And and there is numerous numerous comments to the deputies to be out there that, you know, they like seeing us out there, and and I want to keep the presence because the the presence makes a difference in a lot of ways. So that's the goal. Anything else, Mr. Morale? Okay. So the other part of there is just all that that's benefits, then we go into civil, there is some of the prices increased as far as the programs for civil expense, SOFC, Lexi Paul, memberships, we stayed even, out-of-state travel, and in-state travel to increase a little bit because of costs, gas and oil, about holding increased twenty-five-hundred, and most of that, the gas has been fairly well. It's the oil charges that have been going up and the cost of oil changes and that type of thing, and so that is the increase there. Repair is a maintenance, that's building repair and maintenance for the LEC, that's even, increase on vehicle repair and maintenance up to forty-five-hundred because nothing is getting cheaper as far as vehicles and the cost goes. Any other questions on that? But then we have, you know, sheriff transport, evidence, utilities, postage is a is an increase because of the cost, all the communications is an increase, telephone is even, publishing and printing is is increased because of, one is the cost of paper alone, and that is going up. And then we have the LEC agreement funds is in there too. So as far as all the other office supplies, pretty much that is staying even. Uniforms did increase, I put a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar increase in there for that. As we go through the list, it, most of this is all because of other costs that, outside costs that we can't really control that that keep going up. Deputy increase, deputy equipment is the big one that, for those outside costs because of the vendors, there's some vendors that have gone up between five and seventeen percent, and, you know, I don't know what tariffs are going to make a difference here and a lot of stuff, but we're we're trying to hold that as 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 much as possible, but sometimes you just, you're kind of guessing on on what that all is going to be. I know fairly what we need and what we're we're looking at, so we try to keep that pretty close to to that number. So everything else, crime prevention was a little bit increased, so we can get a few, some other information out on on that as far as some brochures and things that we K-9, just to give you an update on that, is that the the two K-9s that we have are both retired now, or are retired, both as far as Miko and Gabber, and now we just looking at or getting a dog, a canine that is a a trailing dog or tracking, because this is a, we're just in the process of of the dog being, the dog being donated to to get the handler for it, the higher patrol will do a lot of the 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 training as far as the tracking goes to. So we do a lot more, see how this works with with the canine, because we do a lot more need for trailing and tracking at times than we do on for other calls. And so this is kind of a inexpensive way to to give it a whirl here to see if this will work and if we can help out in any way, because we do call on the patrol quite a bit for assistance as far as the bloodhounds and helping us out on that end, which they they gladly do, but we want to see if we can work something in there and and build a program off of this dog too, but it all, you know, all depends on dog and handler and how this goes, so it's kind of a experiment at this point as we move forward with that. So court security, there is a a decrease in that as far as the equipment-wise, copiers even, and insurance claims, that's pretty much stays even there. So with that, I guess before we get to the overall increase of of that amount of roughly over four-hundred-thousand, but that is, salaries and benefits is a hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand of that plus, and the operational increase is the about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and the main reason is because of the capital projects, if you look below on what they are listed. And my number-one thing is a problem with in-car video and body cams that we have now. Currently, we have a vendor that is, that we have been using, is not sure if they're going out of business and what they're doing, you know, a lot of their stuff has been really hard to to work with and maintain and get answers from them and making sure we're, everything is is working the way it's supposed to. So my thing right now is that we, we, and I'm saying that is law enforcement, can't really get along very well in in this day and age with all in-car cameras and with all body cams. It's very important, not only for the public, but for the officer as well, it saves the officer a lot more, I guess, on complaints and all that, when all that, that, a lot of those are are not, are, I guess, are not true, you know, when it comes up in their their, the video and stuff is looked at. So we want to make sure that that is out there. So I have gotten, there's three different companies that that can do this, it's Exxon, Motorola, GTAC also has one, and I have, we're roundabout bids in there or quotes from them, and, you know, now we're talking twenty-twenty-five numbers, what's it going to be in twenty-twenty-six, a little bit, might be up a little bit from what it is right now, they're not a hundred percent sure because in January, they always have a increase. So that's why on there, if you look on the capital projects request, there's the the hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for the first year, but then we have to, on in-car camera, that has to be budgeted every year, so I'm looking at a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand for next year, and we probably got to look at eighty-thousand for the next four years, so it'd be a five-year contract with them, so one through five, and that they would replace all the equipment, we'd take care of the warranty and that type of thing. Or you go ahead and you pay a one-time fee, and if, you know, for the five years, and it's, you're at four-hundred and anywhere between four-hundred-and-twenty-five and four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, but we can do it on annually, and I think it makes more sense to be able to to do it this way with that. So that's where the hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars comes in, and then it's eighty-thousand for years, for years two through five on there. So.
How old is that body cam that you're using now, that technology?
Right now, we have, we've had body cams since about twenty-eighteen, twenty-eighteen. Our biggest issue with that is 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 uploading, one is server space, because right now, the body cams, we are doing on-premises, so it's all on our servers. This is all cloud-based, that, and the cloud is, the backend of it was what cost the money, not necessarily the the cameras and the body cams themselves, but the backend does definitely raise that price up. But with that, we we have a different vendor for for in-car cameras, we have two different systems, one actually eight-hundred and an Evo from from the same vendor, and one of them is going, they're no longer making the the eight-hundreds, it's just going to the Evo, which is all cloud-based, and then we have the the body cams, which is access right now that that we can't get, they don't, we want the video to be able to, so we can get it together, so that the video, if we had one vendor that did both, then all the video would would migrate together, you know, so we don't have that issue. And then the other issue is with requests, video requests and redaction, we don't have a way to, we don't, there's no good, well, we don't have a way to redact, we have to go outside or either ask BCI to help do it. If we have anything to redact as far as videos goes out that that needs to go out to the public, that it's just, it can't be done in-house. This here takes care of a lot of that problem as well, is where this, they come with redaction software, and a lot of that can be done in-house and save the the time on that, plus as far as the state's attorney's office and getting the video, all of that is in one place, it can be migrated together. So it it just makes it a whole lot smoother than the process we have right now. And I've been trying to kind of band-aid it together, but I think we're we're past that point to where something needs to, we need to improve that that system for the benefit of of getting the the cases and the video as as we appropriately need it. So any other questions on that? The the rest of it is, the ECI installs is on there for the body cam, for the in-car videos, basically, the siren to make sure, because we have no, we have no further radios, there are no spares at the moment. The the next one is for a solution for a drone. One is the, that's actually that we could livestream the the drone stuff if we need to, that's that's for, that's the main thing of it. And then an additional drone, because those are used often and a lot as we as we move forward here and for that video. And if it's, if it's Motorola, then tho- those two things also combine to where you can actually livestream through it too. But I would, if this goes forward, we'd take demos from all three of those and come in and and make sure we can look at the the right one that does the best benefit for us. And then the other issue has always been, the vote request is on there too, to to change that on the river. I know Burley County does the River Patrol, and they have one night a week, but we need a, to be able to do that appropriately, I think we need to 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 upgrade the the boat, probably sell the one that we have up there, and then downsize something that would work a lot better in the river at this point, so that's what that is for. So overall, that's why the increase, the capital projects is a hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand of that increase. So overall, if budget-wise, the the request is actually, if you add, you add the requests in together for corrections, coroner, the sheriff's office, security control, it were actually only, what the request is, about thirty-two-thousand dollars higher than what it was last year, but that takes into account the decrease in the amount, in the in the corrections budget, which is a good hit. But overall, it would only be a thirty-two-thousand-dollar increase in the budget, overall budget as far as the, of what I have. So questions on that? And then they also, you you have that too, the, as far as the deputy equipment, the budget, and what's what's all in there, so that is all in the, in that, is as far as the specialized budget and the breakdown of of that too, of each one of those, that is included, those numbers are included in in the budget amount. So any questions you have there?
So Mr. Chairman, do we have any idea how much sales tax we're going to take in to help reduce some of that?
So the sales tax just goes into the general fund, the offset property tax, so it's can, it's figured in the revenue here. So once we take a look at this later, you'll see that we're reducing general fund mill levies by fifteen because of that sales tax that's coming in.
Okay, so it's not going to help?
It it is, I mean, it's it's not, since it's part of the general fund.
Okay.
It's in the general fund, so we'll see the general fund levy go down because that sales tax is coming in.
But right now, you don't know, we don't know exactly where that is, it's just projections.
I'm just projecting, and I mean, I'm very conservative, I'm projecting it on past, but.
Until we know where that funding is, it goes to the jail first.
Right. I mean, technically, it goes to the jail first, but it's all in the same fund.
It's all the same fund.
It goes jail, sheriff, state's attorney, so.
And yeah, big thing with the sale, you know, with the sales tax, it it reduces it, so, and we can still, I think, cover the correctional costs and get some of these other things done that we need to without going back and raising any property tax, without, probably even having a decrease in property tax along the way, I mean, that's the goal, so. Okay, if there's no other questions on budget-wise, then we got one more thing to discuss, and that's the.
Real quick, Sheriff, you had a hundred thousand listed for the, underneath that final budget number there?
Yep.
A hundred thousand for juvenile court or juvenile services?
Yeah, that's.
Didn't we have it a hundred and forty over here on, under each shelter care and stuff? Is that, is that not what you're looking at?
So I can, okay, so if you look at tab nine, juvenile court, so that first line is youth works, the second one is shelter care, so shelter care is the YCC.
Yep.
You can see in twenty-third, or twenty-twenty-three, we were at a hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand, twenty-four, we were just under forty-five-thousand. This year, when this got printed, which was a while ago, there's more bills on top of this, we were at two-hundred-and-six-thousand almost, and we had budgeted sixty-thousand. So I put two-hundred-thousand in for the budget for next year.
Oh, for the twenty-twenty-six, you went from?
I put it at two-hundred.
Went from sixty to two-hundred.
Because we went for the, youth borough was still at five thousand, if we need need that part of it.
No, that's not even in here no more.
That you don't have, you took that out altogether?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, yeah, the two-hundred thousand for the juvenile services, and then juvenile court would be thirty-four-four, is that what you have, or is that a different number?
Thirty-four-two-ninety-eight.
It's thirty-four-two-ninety-eight for youth works, thirty-four-thousand-twenty-eight, and then two-hundred thousand for shelter care, which is YCC.
Okay.
So it's a hundred thousand up.
I just want to update my numbers as we we go through here too, so.
Because you had a hundred there, that's why I was asking, it's different than what we saw.
Very good, and actually, I was going to talk about that anyway, because, you know, and that's what we mentioned about the the YCC issue, is that that is a ongoing issue. We want to call it that.
So Mr. Chairman, before we jump into this next topic, just a quick reflection on one of your opening comments when you got into the sheriff's budget itself, and I didn't capture all of it, but ten thousand dollars added to.
Salary.
Salary for which team?
It would be for some other deputy salary adjustments yet, and mainly for court security.
Right. That's what I added, I wanted to make sure, so if there's an opportunity to increase that budget line, you'd like to see that.
That, that would be the resource.
Okay.
So, Senator Rowan, on that juvenile court one, you think going to two-hundred is going to be?
Enough?
Well, I mean, you look at, look at the history, we've never, I mean, it's been several years since we were above that sixty-thousand, so.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's one of those unpredictable ones, I mean, it's not like we're gonna, not going to have the money if it goes over two-hundred thousand, I mean, we still have enough on reserve that it's not going to be a huge of a deal, but.
No.
It's, it's a.
I mean, it's, it's.
It's a.
It's crazy.
It's very cyclical.
I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a concern of mine on on that end, on what the budget and where this is going, because where is it going, you know? We don't, there is no answer to it at the moment, and that's really what we're trying to look at. So actually, there is, and and this is possibly for maybe Commissioner Morale too, and we have this meeting with the courts and stuff, I may invite you to also to it, so we have, so we have, you're in on this discussion as we as we move forward on some of this, just to give you a heads up on it.
Yep, yep. But yeah, it's a question, if if juvenile activity is increasing that much, what's that going to lead to three years from now, five years from now?
And and we've seen that the trend.
And, and we've seen that, the trend since twenty-twenty, how it's changed, and it's just gotten more.
Well, we had several, several years ago, I remember it went considerably over budget, but then, you know, twenty-three and twenty-four, it was under, right in line with our budget, so. I mean, it's, it's not like you have masses of juveniles out there, it's just that it costs so much and there's a couple there for months on end. That's, it just adds up, I mean, it just takes two or three of them to be there for months.
Well, it's, you know, for one, it's, you know, almost over twelve thousand dollars a month, for one. You know, and then I know, we had a bill of sixty-nine thousand already this year, so. So, the, the juvenile, what, what kind of bothers me with that too is that, the, you do see more younger kids getting involved in some things that, that wasn't, I guess, common ten, fifteen years ago. That's what I'm saying, is that we don't know, you know, and hopefully that trend breaks as we move forward here, but that's the direction it's going at the moment.
So, do the juveniles, so I know like, for instance, if we have an inmate, and they're not from here, but if the crime occurs here, we pay for them. Does juveniles work the same way?
Yes, so if, if they're here, if, if it happens here, and, and a lot of these juveniles do come from Mandan. And we pay for them. And that's another question I have, is that, is it, does it need a legislative change? Is that, cause the legislature, it is now that any, if anybody in, you know, on Bismarck has the same issue, that any juvenile in Mandan gets arrested, they take them out to YCC. It's not a city or a Mandan problem, it turns into a county problem. So that's why, there's more discussions on that too, on what either legislatures, do we look at it? You know, we just need to know, there's just gotta be somewhere that this has gotta be discussed openly on what is going on and where, where we're going with this. Reference to juveniles and the detention of them and, and, and the cost of what it takes to do that, because it has been, you know, talked about before, also in the VMDC meetings along with Sheriff Lieben and, and the committee about, you know, with the open pod there, do you turn it into a juvenile facility? You know, I don't know, I mean, there's, there's, there's a bunch of stuff that's on, and no one really wants to go there at this point. But there's just, there's no good answers right now, so. Any other questions on budgets? All right, so, next thing, we have LEC project that we, I actually mentioned a couple, well, it's been a year or maybe in close to two years now, and some of the projects that we need to do, generator, boilers, some concrete work, so what I did is that, actually, I put this on this, and it's up, so that's a better number of each one of these. So you can look at it. So, so what I did is, once you, you get that sheet, you'll look at the top of that and for the budget summary, and I was advised by Audit Ron that there is nine-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand that is in that account. And this is for sales tax that's left over from the payment of the jail that is used for the remodel of the LEC. That's what is still remaining.
Yeah, we have nine-hundred and, yeah, nine-fifty-five, yep.
Nine-fifty-five, okay, so, I'll update that too. I have nine-fifty-three, but out of that, so as you go through this list, this is, and, and why I'm doing it this way is, one, is that when the remodel was done, there was, there were contractors that were bid, contractors that were used to do the remodel. These are the same contractors that, you know, I've been talking to that do the same work and they're familiar with the building and what they did. And one is, well, Northwest Contracting is one, Ling Tech is another, Interstate Power. And then there's also H.A. Thompson's involved, Frontier Electric. Those are the, the companies that are, would be involved in this, which are all, all local. But as you go through the list, the first one is the amount that's on there, the generator was, I have that hundred-and-thirty-six-nine-twenty. Then you need a day tank for that, which I have listed, and then there's a tariff on the, the generator. So, the tariff is actually five thousand right now, but they said they would split that, so that's where the twenty-five-hundred comes from. They would eat part of the, part of that and then the twenty-five-hundred to us. So that would be, that's all that in the generator costs. The concrete work, this is the, the little over twenty-eight thousand, and this is to replace all of the, the drains that are in the LEC garage. So it'd be the two entrance drains by the garage and then also coming into the garage. And then the, the pit also, the wash bay basically, they've been there for forty years. There's not much left of the grates, they're, they're kind of disintegrating, and the concrete is all wearing out around it. And actually, I'd like to change the concrete, so it actually flows to the drains instead of away from the drains as it does now. So, so that would be part of the fix for that. Then the generator replacement work, that's that, the two-hundred-one thousand, that includes the subcontractors that would be involved in that too. But they actually have to remove a wall, an inside wall and an outside wall, to get the generator out and then a new one in. And then there'd be new louvers and that type of stuff that, so that's all included in that. So we get to the boilers and the pumps now, this is the, the hundred-and-two-thousand, five-hundred is to order the boilers now, as soon as it gets approval, because this has gone up since last fall, when I first started looking at this. These numbers keep going up, they don't necessarily go down. So, what would happen is that the, these, the boilers and the pumps would be ordered, along with the air handler and the AC for the garage would be ordered. So that would all come in, and the generator be ordered, where, anywhere from two to three months out on, on this part, on some of this, you know, to, to get here. And then the boilers and stuff, that, as long as it all comes, it would be here, then the, it would be a spring of twenty-two, spring of twenty-twenty-six install for that, because you can't do it in the winter, because you still need, gotta make sure that you don't need the heat pumps and that type of stuff, of stuff when you are replacing them. So that would be the plan to do, do that in twenty-twenty-six. Now, the air handler in, in the garage is that, I don't know if they can do that this winter. It all depends on, on when we get this ordered and signed and get it in, so we can start with scheduling and when it comes in. Now, whether it's into, I'm guessing it'll be into the fall of twenty-twenty-five and maybe some of it into twenty-twenty-six. It all depends on, on scheduling at this point. So, then the miscellaneous I just have, there's whatever those costs are. I put that, that seventy-one thousand dollars, so right now I have eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand, that's budgeted for this project. But that's as we stand today, and I don't know what numbers are gonna be, but there is the nine-fifty-five in there. But hopefully, we don't have to go that high, but right now I'm looking at eight-fifty out of that. So really, what we need, what I would request is just the approval from the commission to move forward using the sales tax money to get these projects underway, I guess, at this point.
And, and Mr. Chair, just to clarify, the sales tax referring to is the old sales tax that's sunsetted out?
Yeah.
Correct.
For listening.
That is, that is sunsetted.
Listening public as well?
And that, when that was on the ballot for approval for that, it was worded to use it for remodel of the LEC along with paying for the bonds of the detention center. So, ten percent of it was put in a fund every time the collections came in, into the remodel fund, and it paid those bonds off. And back when this was started, it was anticipated that we would only have X number of dollars to do the remodel. And so this, these things did not get done because we didn't think we had enough money. But now that we have this leftover money, we're falling into compliance to use it for that building, since that was the question on the ballot.
And, and the sheriff and I, well, we looked at that garage, shoot, that was two years ago, we looked at that garage, so that's been waiting.
Yes, it's.
And deteriorating even more. Yep, and then the generator work, that's been discussed for about a year now.
Correct, and then, I don't know, there was a, there's discussion about it, about whether, whether this generator could be used, moved up to the county shop, you know, or used in, in a, in another location.
Yes, and so John said he would take it and he was gonna work with some engineers or someone to see if it could be installed up there, because they do not have a generator at the county shop at this time.
So that would be another use for it, I get at this point, I mean, it still runs, but it's, it's forty years old, but it, they, they, it doesn't go by clean energy, as they call it nowadays, for, especially with electronics and communications and computers and stuff that, that is when it wasn't in nineteen eighty-five, but is today.
Mr. Chair, I got a couple of questions, if I may though.
Go ahead.
For the, the two-hundred day tank, don't we have a reserve tank with this one?
No, not, it, it is, but it ain't big enough.
Okay.
And I asked him about that, for as far as the day tank, they said, they gotta have the day tank that pulls out of the tank that's underground, you know, that stores this. And, now, I'm not necessarily a generator guy, he told me the reason, made sense, but I don't know, you know, I'm not.
I would suspect it's probably pressurization?
Yeah, there was a reason they wanted that, that tank, because it draws off of that, they don't want it drawn from underground. I mean, when it's drawn.
Kind of like electronic fuel injector carburetor against a standard fuel pump, they don't, they don't communicate.
Yeah, there was, there was, there was a reason he wanted it, which made sense to me, I know exactly what that all does, I, I tell you.
And then I don't, I don't see anything in the scope as far as anchoring the generator, is that, is that not a need?
Yep, yeah, it, it does get anchored.
Okay, I just don't see it in the scope work.
I mean, this one's anchored, it'd be anchored as well, so.
And then?
It has to be, and it gets, and it gets actually rotated, and that's why they had to do some things with the, the exhaust is not necessarily the best right now, so that will be changed. And it'll, the generator gets rotated from sitting in one direction, it'll get basically ninety, it'll get rotated at ninety-degree angle to, uh, and that's why part of the wall has to come out, and they put in new louvers, so there'll be outside louvers, and that's all part of the.
Right, and that damping system. So I saw the exhaust penetrating through the roof, is that, is that roof EPDM, rubber?
I.
Do you remember?
I don't think so, unless, there was, there was some work that was done to it, but otherwise it's still metal.
Okay, so it'll be booted then? And then?
And, you know, in the future, well, it's a whole nother discussion too, but I don't know if I wanna talk about it tonight yet, but bring it up, is that in the future, we gotta look what the future's gonna do as far as that building, as far as the sheriff's office and the police department in a building that was built in nineteen eighty-five that fit a staff back then, but does it now? So it's just things to discuss as we move forward here on, on.
And we've had that conversation separate from this.
Yes, it's, it's a never-ending conversation.
Right, but then also the la- last line in the proposal, the scope, does not include structural, architectural, mechanical or electrical design fees. Obviously Frontier, they're gonna do their own design work, the generator comes with their own schematics, so they're gonna communicate that way. But do you see any other structural?
So, no, and that pretty much is the, the way the, it, it's, the walls will get changed, but that's all in here with, with Northwest.
But would they have to do any structural reinforcement while that wall is open?
I don't think, they're gonna change, the door and stuff will get changed, and that's all in here too.
Right.
So there's nothing else structural that, that'll affect the, the garage, other than, you know, what they need to do. But Northwest has all that, Interstate would do the generator, then you have to have mechanical, which is part of H.A. Thompson's deal. And then you have the electrical on top of that. Now, what other issues they have, you know, when this all gets going, that, that remains to be seen, but hopefully not made.
Well, the, the only thing I would question as an unknown, unanticipated, unknown, would be structural. Because again, your mechanical's gonna be covered by HVAC company, they're gonna get that all mechanically engineered. So that's gonna be how their operation's gonna go into play. The electrical, there's no need to do any electrical engineering, because it's called coming from the manufacturer of the generator, and Frontier is very well in, in tune, I work with Frontier also. So they're very well in tune with, with that connectivity. The architectural, I don't see any need for architectural, because you're not, you're not adding on anything.
Right.
But again, when you cut open the two holes on the masonry brick, just question, again, depends on how long those holes stay open. But you got that tonnage that's still coming down, so that might need to have, have to get reinforced some way somehow. But I also question, you know, who's gonna be the general on this? Is it gonna be Northwest?
Northwest.
So they're gonna do the overall general?
Yeah.
So they would have the expertise at least?
Yeah, they know exactly what they need to do.
Okay.
We've had numerous discussions on it.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a comment here as well. You know, I'd made the statement before that I, I recognize the value of using trusted vendors, people that are in the community. They know the facilities, they know the generator, I get all of that. But something, things that are popping up, tariffs. I know there's other vendors that tariffs wouldn't apply to them, and so there, there's extra dollars going to that. I defer to Commissioner Morrell on the, on the building side of it. His business and knowledge is a lot more in-depth than mine, but I look at, we've got an H.A. Thompson and Sons bid here, a quote for installation of, of louvers and exhaust manifolds and everything, and amounts to sixty-seven thousand, two-hundred dollars. And then they've got a whole lot of stuff that's not included. So, to my, the way I look at it, that's probably a pretty steep number for what they're providing, I just don't know that. And, and then that number from everything else I'm seeing on there, if, if everything goes up at that rate, that, that portion will probably double. You know, it's, it's just all these things that sometimes I wonder if we should, if we should be putting this, this out for bids and, and getting additional vendors involved. I just wanted to make that statement, because it, it, you know, again, we're still paying, or still spending a taxpayer's money here.
As a chair, I would, I support what Commissioner Tocash is saying, but as I look at, as I look at the not included line items themselves, that's gonna be very standard. So your electrical, your low voltage controls, that's what Lin Tech does. The generator, obviously that's self-descriptive, the roofing roof penetration patch, that's on Northwest Contracting, in this case. Concrete cut and patch, that's on Northwest Contracting, the trench drain, that's on Northwest Contracting. Installation, the equipment in the room, Northwest Con, they're the ones that, or Interstate is gonna be the ones that placed the generator. The tampe heat or utilities, the bonding contingencies dumpster, that's on Northwest Contracting. So that's all standard for a construction contractor, just put in here as a CYA for them. Making sure that they don't be held accountable, so if there's a leak in the roof, typically your, your HVAC will make the penetration, which a roofing contractor will seal the penetration, and that's just a disclaimer for them, who's responsible for, for what. So I definitely understand that question, I, I would agree, that would be good to bid it, just to help keep everyone honest and help ensure that, that we get the best value. But I also understand that there's a time concern. We've also been, you know, two years down and we're still working this.
And I do understand the time constraints there.
And I don't know if we would have other vendors that have, I'm guessing the cost would be more, because they're, they had to come in and look at the building, but.
Well, the.
You know, as far. You know, as far as that goes, these are, you know, contractors that were originally in the specs, you know, that that bid the building. Um, as we're moving forward, so what, you know, I I guess I don't wanna keep adding costs to this, I'd like to, uh, get this. Moving without costs going up as we, as we either delay it or wait more longer.
And and again, I do recognize that, uh, Sheriff Kirk Meyer, but you know, total budget for the project, we're talking eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so. It's not a small number, so.
I I do look at, um, two, two, two. The boilers. Um, I just finished a, uh, an industrial plant that had. Three boilers in there. And the cost on this is comparable, uh, LinTech did not do the connections on that, another firm did, but they're they're definitely comparable. The H A Thompson, from what I see, is comparable. You know, but again, I question if there's, another vendor may come in for ten thousand dollars less, you know. The scope work for the, for the Northwest contract with the co- for the, um, the concrete and all that. I don't wanna say aloud, but that's a nice price. But then for the other, the overall scope of work too. That's the, in black and white, that seems reasonable, you know, I I'd have to s- calendar that out, see what the schedule would be, but. But again, it's just being stewards of the, of the money, making sure, uh, there's a distinct correlation with. That institutional knowledge for knowing the facility, knowing the heat plant, knowing, knowing that, but also making sure that we are stewards with the dollars. Cause a a HVAC company that is is good, knows duct sizing. They know how to interpret the blue, cause the blueprints are still there, so they can interpret that, just say.
Commissioners, what are our wishes here? Are you still studying?
So almost half of this dollar is with the generator itself. Supporting the generator itself. So you got a hundred fifty thousand for the generator, um, two hundred thousand for the. The overall replacement for the generator, and then the noted concrete repairs are twenty-eight thousand, that's, that's. You know. For, yeah, roughly four hundred thousand dollars right there.
So where'd the seventy-one thousand come for from for miscellaneous?
Well, that that's the number that is just for the unknowns on some of this stuff that changes.
It's incidentals, contingencies. So it it's typical to put in five to ten percent for contingencies, just in case something pops up.
Might not get spent, it might get spent.
Correct, correct.
Actually, it's at about nine percent.
Yeah, and 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 again, that's within realm, and that's very typical for even architects put that in.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. For the. I'll make a motion, we authorize, uh, eight hundred fifty thousand dollar expense to approve this. Law enforcement center improvement project of replacing the generator, um, and the work associated with replacing generator. Concrete repairs. And the boiler replacement. With the funds being used from the sales tax collections, bond measure of previous years.
Law enforcement center.
The law enforcement center, correct.
Uh, I think we need to check into that, I'm not sure with their, what the, um, Al, do you happen to know what the. Century code says on what the threshold is for requirements to put it out for bid? Cause I I know it's changed a couple times in the last fourteen years, but I don't remember what it is exactly anymore.
State procurement is anything over fifty thousand needs three bids.
Yeah, it's it's not that.
But that's.
Cause there's different things for counties, there's buildings, there's election supplies, there's different categories, and I don't know what it is for. If this falls into building or what this falls into. Please.
Ms. Chairman, question for the sheriff.
So I have a mo- I have a motion without a second.
Just a quick question.
I want a second it so we can have more discussion to be protocol.
Okay, go ahead.
Do you need this decision automatically tonight, or can we have this, you know, check into the bidding process?
Well, I think we can check into it, make sure that we're good to go on it, but my question is is, uh.
Seventh of August.
Yeah.
I mean. We wanna make sure we do it right, you know, uh, to to go through it and if there's any, and I'm not aware of any other contractors. Somebody would have to tell me some other information on who to check with, you know, I mean, if there is anything else to to put any other bids out. These are the ones that mainly been working with, you know, and I'm familiar with as far as getting the the work done, now who else does it? Like boilers and stuff, I'm not sure.
I, I I have contacts.
You know, so, uh. It could be looked at, but I just, uh, I just don't think it's a good idea just to, to delay this longer and longer, I mean, it. Do it as soon as we can, but do it when we need to, but I I don't want the prices to keep going up to where we're over what we have.
Yeah, cause I mean, if we're, if if century code says that, let's say it says a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is. Ri- the threshold, you have to put it out for bids, if it's over that, then we'd have to put it out for bids, and we would just advertise it in the newspaper. And have a bid opening date, the bids are due by a certain date and whatever comes in, then we open them.
Yeah, you might only get these guys.
Yeah, I mean, that's possible.
So our next meeting is August seventh, so if we could get an answer by then, Mr. Copy.
And you wouldn't have to present the whole thing again.
That's good.
But I I agree, if we get this, this size of a project, I think we, at least let's make sure what we're doing is correct.
Then, Mr. Chairman, should we also be getting information on what it's gonna take to move the old generator up to the county shop?
That would be a separate action, we definitely would research that.
That needs to be addressed too.
It'd be a funding issue, I'm here, wherever that comes from.
Highway Department.
They they pull it out and set it on a truck, and then whatever gets up there, then that's on them. So, okay, we have a motion on the floor, um, so, for discussion, we had to second it. We can just, however you guys wanna do this, but I will do a roll call vote because of the amounts here.
Can I amend the motion to include that we'll find out the sa- the bid?
I was gonna suggest that we just do that as an amendment.
That's what.
Yeah. But the purpose for the motion, I actually get this moving forward, so if we wanna do. Am- amendment, just bring it back, at least this part of discussion has already been made.
Can you amend it to bring it back, that's what.
Well, your motion, Ray, was to move forward with the.
Authorize expenditure using using the fund.
And you can amend it to say after we found out what our requirements are by century code.
Yes.
That would be proper.
Yep, I'll make that amendment.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have an amendment on the floor to. Move forward with the, the project after we've received information from our state's attorney on the bidding process. This, we are voting on the amendment, is there any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion?
I just wanted to make sure that we are approving, uh, the expenditure of the fund, we're approving the funding. But not awarding it at this point, correct.
Correct.
Is there any other discussion? Remember voting on the amendment, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Amendment carries, now we vote on the motion as amended to approve the funds. After we have our decision from the state's attorney on the bidding process. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Um, I'm gonna do a roll call vote on that one, Commissioner Morrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
Yes.
And myself, yes, motion carries, so we will bring this, uh, after we get a decision from. State's attorney, we will, uh, we'll bring it right back up.
Alright, sounds good.
And that may even meet tonight yet.
It could be.
I'm researching too.
He's, he's gotta pro- he's gotta present his budget, so.
Hey, any other questions, if not, thank you very much.
I do have one, because it was in yours under the, um. Tab six, was it, just, and this might, I'm not sure if this is for you sheriff, for for the sexually dangerous individuals.
Oh, that's more of an Al question.
That's more of an Al question, okay, we'll wait until we do that one then, there, it's just the amounts there, just trying to figure things back and forth a little bit. So, I'll wait until, we do that with Al, gotcha. Okay, thank you. I will move into the state's attorney's budget, I think Chase is presenting.
So can let's talk about this sexually dangerous individual line item first, so, um, there's certain. Cases that get, that they can explain a little more, but, uh, there's certain cases that get sent to these attorneys that. Send us the bills for. These certain cases and we have to pay them and we have had none this year, you can see in twenty twenty-four, it's six thousand dollars.
Well, and it was just at the fifteen thousand and we haven't spent more than sixty-one.
We used to, it's another one of those, like those, like the Y C C.
Okay.
All of a sudden, you can have a bunch of them and then you don't have any and.
Gotcha, and that's, that was my question, cause if we're, if this is pretty stagnant, you could take that five and put it up in the center budget and you wouldn't be adding anything.
And then as long as we're on this, um, this, this page of the budget, let's talk about mental health cases also, so we used to have. Uh, Mr. Rungy, who did all of our mental health cases, and then he discharged us like a flat fee and he passed away. And then after that, do the judges, how do they get assigned these mental health cases, the the judges just assign them to a.
We have.
Attorney.
Two attorneys, William Woodworth and Chad Nodlin are sharing the contract.
And it's not really a con- I mean, it's not really a, and it's not a flat fee contract like we used to have, they charge us by the hour. So you can see back in twenty twenty-three, it was sixteen nine oh nine, twenty-four was seventeen, and now this year we've spent that much already. And I don't remember when Mr. Rungy passed away, was it, it's been a couple of years.
Twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so you can see it's just kind of increasing, and so you can see we have twenty thousand budgeted for this year, while we've already. Last month, when I printed these out, we've already expended almost seventeen, so I did up that budget to forty thousand.
And the question was just because we hadn't used some of that one without increasing the budget at all, you could have shifted it over.
We haven't had as many of those SDI cases in the last few years as we used to have.
Correct.
Yeah, the center's gonna go up thirty-six hundred, and it would have been just a shift and not change anything, but that's okay, I'm.
And and those are really, um, kind of sporadic, where you'll have somebody who is a sex offender and they'll come out of prison. And then, uh, we'll get a referral from the state hospital, suddenly we have another one. You just can't, you just can't predict that.
Gotcha, thank you. It might be ten years till I figure out all this budgeting stuff, but we'll get there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening now.
I think it's good night already.
Supper's getting late.
Unless you're putting me to bed, in which case, good night. Okay, um, we've been here for a while, so I'm just gonna jump right into it. Um, biggest change is, plural. The twenty-eight thousand dollar in trial expenses, that was spurred by. The presiding judge's modification to scheduling orders across all judges' cases. Now require us to pre-file all of our trial exhibits that we plan to use in any of our trials. By noon the day before the final dispositional conference. Typically, by that point, we know where our cases are at for the most part, unless they are self represented. In which case, we're not sure if they're going to plead the next day or not. Even then, if they are represented by defense attorney, sometimes we still don't know if they're going to plead the next day or not. So our office is having to print out now all of our exhibits going forward. That also includes any video exhibits going onto discs, going down to the clerk's office. USBs for any that don't necessarily fit well onto discs. Printing out three hundred plus pages of medical records, both redacted and unredacted, just in case there's an objection. So. The reason it's so high right now is because it's budgeted for roughly twenty dollars per criminal case that we pass. Per criminal case we have, um, typically, we've been at around fourteen hundred criminal cases. Now, I don't expect us to be spending twenty dollars per case, but the reason it's so high is. Genuinely hadn't crossed my mind, the financial impact of this until I had a conversation with Burley County. And it was pointed out to me that they had just had to explain why their trial expenses was. Increasing in their twenty twenty-six budget, and I realized I should probably put something into the budget. That being said, I am reaching out to Fireside tomorrow to look at getting. Or look at getting some estimates for some printer, some photo printers. For our office, right now, if we want high quality photos, we've been using the UPS store. Which is not necessarily ideal in certain types of cases. Um, all of what we print with them will become part of the public record. Uh, we don't send them medical records to print, it's just photo exhibits that we are actually going to use. That being said, there is still some concern there, if for whatever reason, the photo wouldn't become part of a public record. The only other option we've had is to print it out in our office on printer paper. The problem with that is, and I don't know for sure whether juries are taking this into account, other than the mention of some of. Some jurors occasionally after trials indicating our office could be better prepared. When during the trial itself, there was no indication that we were unprepared for things. So I'm, my assumption there is that when we hand somebody a photo on a regular piece of printer paper. It's not coming across super professional, it's not necessarily coming across like we care, so it's. Trying to balance, making sure that we can present our cases and not. Sending everything to UPS so that there's not, nah, there's not disclosure of sensitive information. To a non-confidential entity, but also needing to maintain that professionalism. So reaching out to Fireside, hopefully to get us some quotes for a couple printers, as well as estimated printing costs. As far as ink and printer paper, so that come August, in a few weeks here, I can come back and explain. Hey, so remember that twenty-eight thousand, it's actually probably going to be closer. Hey, so remember that twenty eight thousand, it's actually probably going to be closer to fourteen. Um, it is still going to be an increase. Hopefully it will just be a one-time increase and then every five years. When that printer needs to be replaced. But that's where we're at unfortunately, um. My professional opinion of that scheduling order aside, it's the reality we're stuck with. And absent me engaging in an unethical act of just ignoring it. In a driving under suspension case so that I can appeal the court telling me that I don't get to present evidence. Which I'm not going to do because I like my law license. Uh, there's not much we can do about it at this point. So that's why that's high, it will come down. Um, what we've also seen from jurors is. An unusual desire for more. Uh, I think I presented last year and explained, you know, juries keep wanting more than what we have. For whatever reason, what we give them, not enough. State's Attorney Copy had a case a few years ago, which I still bring up to victims all the time. Where State's Attorney Copy presented video clear as day of the woman taking cash out of the safe in the residence. Gets published to the jury, law enforcement explains that the serialized. Or the serial numbers from the cash that was taken from the safe, some of those were found in her purse later. Jury came back not guilty. I had a case recently where the jury told me afterward, after coming back not guilty. Can you let the victim know that we believed everything she said about what happened to her and that it happened to her, we just needed more? I will give a slight nod to my own professionalism that there. That I didn't get charged with anything and I did not swear. Um, because it's frustrating. So I, part of that budget is looking as well at bringing in more experts. Um, ideally, we would be able to use law enforcement experts or individuals within the community that we already have relationships with. That aren't necessarily going to charge us. But bringing in an individual on a domestic violence case where the victim was slow to. Come forward with, to law enforcement about what occurred, to explain to a jury who might not understand. Hey, domestic violence victims have a hard time overcoming that emotional connection with that defendant. Even if they understand that what the defendant did was wrong, they still go through a process of trying to rationalize it in an effort to protect their own. Self-image because it's hard for an individual to believe. That they could have possibly fallen for somebody who would do this to anyone. And having them explain that to a jury instead of just relying on a jury to understand that. From the victim's testimony about their own. For lack of a better term, coming out process. So that's where that money is coming from, that will get reduced. It's just that discussion with Burley County happened the day before I had to submit the budget. So looking at about twenty dollars because that's about what it was costing for. Our average case if we were to send it to UPS. The other big increase is the request for a new position. The investigator slash office manager position. Right now, my assistant Rhonda is acting as the office manager. She is also acting as the trainer for all of the legal assistants. And while that has not, to my knowledge yet, caused a problem in terms of the duality of that role, it. There's always the possibility that it could. Uh, legal assistants who may not like the training that they receive. Don't really have another person to go to before going to State's Attorney Copy or, or I about it. And if it's about my assistant, I can understand that there would be difficulty coming to me about it. Additionally, with the increased requirement from the court for pre-filing all of our exhibits. That's giving us a greater time crunch on. Having to figure out which exhibits in which order we're doing and that, and all of that for every single trial. To be clear, our office and our attorneys are going through all of their cases, we are familiar with our exhibit or with the videos in our cases. But the level of familiarity required for trial is slightly different. Additionally, following up with requests for additional information in our cases, right now we're having to go to. The Sheriff's Department for Sheriff's cases or to Amanda M P D for their cases to request follow-up. They are also extremely swamped with continuing investigations of other cases. Which has resulted in us having to go out and collect evidence ourselves. Which can be problematic if there is an issue with the evidence that gets collected. So if law enforcement didn't get video from a gas station and says they can't go get it yet. But it's been about a month and we know gas station, that gas station usually gets overwritten every month or so. Guess who has to run and get it because it's either that or the evidence gets destroyed. So the hope with the investigator position is to bring on a licensed peace officer. To help assist us in some of that follow-up. To assist us in reviewing jail communications that are getting recorded. We've had quite a few cases lately where those jail communications have actually proven extremely helpful. There's pending matters that I won't discuss, but suffice it to say. Inmates aren't the best at keeping things hidden from their friends when they're texting or calling. And it is very fun and it is very helpful. But it is also a drain on the state's attorney, the state's attorney's time. When we're also having to review those to ensure that they're not tampering with witnesses, for example. Or to make sure that they are not confessing on those. Or that they're not communicating with other individuals to communicate with the victim, all of that. Those who have been around for a while will know that this type of position was previously held by Jay Groobly. Uh, he did an, an amazing job while he was with us. It will be na- it would be nice to have that position back to free up some of those resources. For the attorneys to be able to focus on prosecuting their cases. And not necessarily having to direct half of their energy into continued investigations. That could be handled by a law enforcement officer. So those are the two big things. Uh, the reason for the ninety thousand dollar salary figure is. Without naming names, I've talked to numerous individuals. Who would have, who would be potentially interested in making a transition from whichever agency they are with. To this position, and that's been the lowest salary. That most of them are indicating that they'd be transferring for. Um, just because it would involve them leaving their current position, their current pensions, all of that. The hope with that as well is not necessarily to start that position in twenty twenty six. Um, we'd be hoping to start onboarding that person sometime this fall. Likely, hopefully soonest being October. With that being said, um, on the salaries, you'll also notice we do still have an open. Position for Chantel's front desk position as well as two open attorney positions. That were budgeted for last year and continue to be budgeted for. Good news. One of the attorney positions has been filled by an attorney who should be starting in August. The other is being filled by a law clerk who will be taking the bar next week and hopefully becoming an attorney in September. But with us not having had those positions filled, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars. Of unpaid salary budget over the last seven months. So, that hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars could be used to offset. The seven thousand five hundred dollars per month. That an investigator position at ninety thousand dollars would be for the rest of the year. Um, so for three months, assuming they started October first, that'd be twenty two thousand five hundred dollars. I will note as, sorry to jump back, um, but we do have about ten thousand dollars in forfeiture funds that we could also be. That we're also gonna be looking at using for trial funds and particularly photo printers. So, once we get that amount figured out, we'll calculate how much we're, we're gonna pull from forfeiture funds to use for that. Possibly even completely draining forfeiture funds, but we'll see. Uh, that being said, there. There is a slight increase to on-call salaries, right now it's eleven dollars and thirty eight cents a day, just bumping that up to twelve dollars per day. Just to reflect the. Weight in our pocket that that can be, um, because of how our office is structured right now. It's, they have to remain within fifteen minutes. Of the courthouse or within fifteen minutes of a stable internet connection. That way we can review search warrants and get them up to the judge as soon as possible. Because if we're getting a late night warrant, residency is necessary, so getting those done as soon as possible. Um, also maintaining the requirements of. Our ethical profession and not having consumed alcohol, so there's that restriction. We often re-focus our lives around it, um, avoiding going out to eat at certain times. Just because we know something might happen, um, making sure that if we do go out to eat, everyone with us knows. So that we can get the ball rolling and get our food as quickly as possible. So just a slight increase there to reflect the continued support and burden that that can present. Uh, there is a reduction to paid overtime. Um, there's been a reduction in the amount of overtime in our office, we've been really focusing on making sure that everyone gets out. At five o'clock to help maintain a healthy work, work-life balance. But the reality is, we don't know what next year is going to bring as far as caseload, so there is also the possibility that overtime salaries may still be. A thing next year, so that is why it's going, the request is from ten to five thousand, just to be safe. Out of straight, out of state travel expenses, that one was brought up by a thousand just to reflect the change in amount this year. Uh, travel expenses was brought down, there is the creation of gas and oil expenses as well as auto maintenance and repairs. For the Subaru that we have for our office, using current. Amounts that have been spent and then basically doubling it to calculate for the rest of the year. And I think that should cover. All of it?
Chance, you wanna talk about the computers, why you haven't spent any of that? Because it's, I guess I think it's important.
Yeah, so looking at capital L A equipment, um. We have not purchased our computers yet for this year, so that's why that still shows a zero in our budget item there. We typically, what happens is my assistant, who's also the office manager. Will put out the request for that quote. Again, like, she, we get it the year ahead, but then, once we finally get the budget approved, we put in the request for. The quote this year so that we can sign off on it, so we can get that ball rolling. Because I am currently sitting at about a hundred plus active cases just for criminals. Um, needless to say, my assistant has been excessively busy, um, keeping track of my caseload. So that slipped through the cracks a little bit, we did reach out, we did get the quote from N R G, we have signed off on it. That will be getting paid for. Um, it's, I believe, three computers this year and we're set for three computers next year. So that's why it's remaining the same is, from what we got from N R G, it should be roughly the same.
Commissioners, any questions for Chase on this budget? Pretty straightforward.
We're excited we're gonna get that, especially the one new attorney, so we can fill the empty positions.
Yes, it'll be very nice.
Have you even tried to fill the front desk position yet?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, that's fine.
It's been, we've been looking at it as we've been interviewing assistant positions. Um, and if somebody came along who was willing to accept that position, it's been discussed that. That position can be used to train into a legal assistant position when one opens up. But because of the salary for it, no one's necessary, no one's really wanting to leave their current positions for it, which is understandable.
It's nice that the attorney we have hired is experienced.
Correct. He used to work for the Stetson County State's Attorney's Office, our office reached out. Glowing recommendation and review from Stetson County. Uh, he moved to Arizona to deal with some family stuff and is looking to make a return to North Dakota. I am glad that we picked him up before any other county was able to.
Good.
And I'm hopeful that our other law clerk will become an attorney in September, he's also seems extremely motivated, so.
Good. It'd be nice to have everybody filled up again.
It will. It'd be weird to have all of the offices packed.
Any other questions for Chase? Not seen any. Thank you, Chase.
Thank you, Chase.
Auditor Roan. Whether you have anything to say on the budget or on, then we, if not, we can move into that public policy.
I guess, um, the, the documents I emailed out to you yesterday that's. You have new updated, I printed them and put them in the front of your book too. So I guess if anybody has any questions on any of these, um, next meeting on August seventh, we'll need to approve. Our preliminary budget. Um, there's changes, we no longer send out the estimated tax statement. Um, so I don't know that there is any restrictions on going up on the budget after preliminary anymore. There's no publication of it, there's no sending it out, all we do is send out a notice that has the date and time of all the political subdivisions. Um, budget hearings, so people will get a letter, every property owner will get a, a notice in the mail showing. This is when the counties have in their public budget hearing, this is when the school is, the city, et cetera.
No restriction on going?
I, I just thought of that, I didn't think of that before, so I'll, I'll find that out before our next, our next meeting.
Never go up before, you could only go down.
I mean, you could always amend your budget later, but you couldn't go up in your tax levy when the big deal was. So I don't, I just thought of that, I don't know if that's an issue anymore, if you can not, I mean, if we're not sending anything out that says this is our. What our proposed levy is, I don't know, but we just need to approve the preliminary budget next meeting and it has to be available for the public. I think that notice that goes out says, the budget is available for public viewing at. The location listed on their courthouse or the school, you know, central office or whatever, so we have to have the budget available for, um, anyone to view that would come in. Um, if anybody has, wants to look at this after the meeting and if you have questions, you can call me or come in or whatever, we can, I can answer your questions. But, um, as we mentioned before, the sales tax is gonna start coming in, so if you look at the very top line where it says general fund. And then you look over at the budget mills, um, it says twenty and last year was thirty five point thirty five, so right there we have a fifteen point three five. Mill reduction in the general fund due to that sales tax that is in the budget. And other than that, nothing much changed, other than the, the road and bridge went. Um, we used to have a road and bridge levy and we had a farm to market, um, when the legis- or the, there was a big overhaul in the whole property tax. Levis about ten years ago, and in that, it came out of that, uh, restructuring that the farm to market. Levy could only be used for another ten years unless you put it on the ballot. So we don't have that to levy anymore, so we're just maxing out. Uh, we, we, last year we levied five point seven five in that fund, so if you look on the line where it says road and bridge. Budget mill says ten, last year says ten point seven five, the ten point seven five was five from road and bridge, five point seven five from farm to market. Uh, we cannot go above ten in road and bridge, so. So it's maxed out at the ten and there's actually, um, I think five hundred thousand dollars being transferred from the general fund to the road and bridge. So my thought, these last ten years, when I knew that had to go away, my thought was. We have plenty of room in our general fund, so if we need to transfer from the general fund, we can do that rather than put it on the ballot and go through that whole rigmarole. Just trying to keep that, uh, other levy for a couple mills. So on the bottom right-hand corner, you can see, um, twenty twenty five total. Um, property tax levy is ten point eight million. On twenty twenty four, it was fourteen million, so that is a decrease of three point. Two million, which is due largely to that fifteen mil decrease in the general fund. Um, on the bottom over towards the left, you can see thirty four percent of the revenue is property taxes, sixteen percent of revenue is sales taxes. So those two combined is fifty percent and that's usually in the past, it's always been around, property tax has been fifty to fifty one percent of the total revenue, so.
How did I miss community garden?
That's the separate fund that this extension office actually has a separate fund for the community garden.
I just, I never really picked that one up.
Collect so much money and.
Pay it out of there.
Eighty bucks is for me, so.
Don, where's the website at? How's that listed, technology?
That's within the general fund, so.
Just straight up general expense?
Well, this is by fund.
Right.
So there's lots of departments in the general fund. So if you look at this other sheet. That lists all the funds within, or the departments in the general fund, there is a technology department, yep.
So it's under that?
Yep. So that's all I have. If, unless anybody has any questions, if not, you can move on to the, talk about your policy.
No questions for Dawn on the budget right now? Got some studying to do. All right, we'll move forward then onto the public comment, regular meetings of a public entity. So according to sentry code, by August one, we have to have something in place and policy. Um, and a few different things tossed around. State's attorney copy gave us a, a draft form or a template form of what he had thought. We can work off of that or what, um, we have from our assistant H R upstairs. And I guess right now I'm just gonna open it up for comments or what you guys wanna do.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, uh, believe we should work off the draft that we have in our. Uh, board packet. That was put together by, uh, Cheryl Leach. I said, my only, the, the reason I like that draft is it, it's a lot more welcoming and inviting. Uh, to, uh, the general public that they are welcome to pro- uh, provide comments within a meeting. Uh, lays the, uh, the rules out pretty clearly. My only concern with that is on item six. And the law that was passed by the legislature is, is very clear. Uh, on, we can't put any additional constraints on comments. Uh, and, uh, or restrict people from commenting other than what's laid out in, uh. Uh, I've got an incentive bill twenty one eighty. And so I was looking at number six. And the, the first paragraph in number six, I perceive that as to. Uh, adding additional restrictions on there. So, uh, I would propose striking. Number six and replacing it with six A. And, uh, for anyone listening, Ann, I'll just read it quick. Six, the public comment period is established for members of the public who physically attend county board meetings. Uh, public comment period is not available to individuals who wish to address the board by real, remote means. Including telephone, video conferencing or other electronic means. Uh, I, I interpret that as being, uh, restrictive. And six A, I'd like to replace that by six A. And, uh, that, uh, states, members of the public who do not attend county board meetings in person are welcome to submit comments to the board. By other means, including mail or email. Again, it's not saying they can't, but we welcome to do it in that form. Other than that, I like, uh, I like the draft in our board packet.
So, and, and I read your comments and have to, if we go that direction, we'll have to re-import the, or reiterate what we, you said. Didn't get a chance to talk to you, Commissioner Tocash, but talked to Aaron Burst this afternoon. When you read the, uh, Senate Bill twenty one eighty, under number two, it's an individual providing comment at a meeting. So I read that as physically being at the meeting. Uh, talking to Aaron Burst with the North Dakota Association of Counties. He says we would not be overstepping any law or bounds by saying they have to be present. Because the remote with the, oh, telecommunications. The struggles with some counties of telecommunications, we're not as bad as some, we have our issues now and then. Um, that that is a viable, reliable source is not always great. And you could have people coming on without being on video, whatever. You would have, you know, let them talk. When it's not actually doing what the whole thing was meant to do. So it, just in respect to what that, the word at. Was the key word and I'm sure we could pull ten lawyers and we'll get five and five.
Different interpretations.
Exactly. Um, and we can adjust this. We can adjust our policy at any time. So what, I mean, we're okay either way. But the reasoning I was looking at it was at the meeting means physically at the meeting, submit the card, be here. We moved it to the end of the meeting because I, as I said last time. Uh, if I've got ten people in the audience and they wanna give us some information to help us make a correct decision, I'm gonna listen to them during the meeting. Anybody at the end, if they have something from the last meeting or something else that we're not on the agenda, great, we're gonna listen to you. But, and that took away that beginning of the meeting. That's perfect. I think that's great. Um, so. Like I said, we're gonna get ten different interpretations, but I think to me, I would like them here. They can still provide written comment, emails, and we'll read them. That's all fair. I'm, we'll never chase that away. I honestly don't think that this Senate bill was written for Morton County. Wasn't because of us. It's just everybody got lumped in and there were problems elsewhere. We, I don't think we've done a poor job of letting our people talk. Not at all. Anybody that's come here has had the opportunity to talk and I don't foresee changing that. If they forget to submit a card to start with, I'm not gonna care.
Right. And granted, our history doesn't, uh, doesn't play into this. And I, and I would agree with you. We go out of our way to allow the public to comment and I'd, I'd like to keep that. And I just, uh, and again, it is open to interpretation. But, uh, one interpretation could be that we're adding an additional restriction, so that's, that's where my comments come from.
I did go back and to one of the stuff Cheryl sent us, the one that Dawn had picked up from her auditor's meeting. It basically reads right out of the law and says comments at a meeting must submit the whole thing. So that was, that was that one. And I was trying to find it on the other one here, the. The one from the auditors themselves was in there too someplace and I didn't circle it. But anyway, it, they all go back to add a meeting and, and that's gonna be the interpretation. Whether we run with it and, and then if it doesn't work, we change it or, or we change it now. That's your guys' decision. Any other comments? Like I said, we do have to make a decision tonight to adopt a policy. How it's worded is. Open to discussion right now.
Mr. Chair, make a motion, we adopt the policy of, um, as written. Of, uh, four zero zero dash zero zero six, public comment, regular meetings of a public entity. And that, um, well, just as side comment, if we have a need to make change after this is adoption. Then we can address that then. That's fair.
Second.
All right. It has been moved to adopt. Public comment policy, a regular meeting of a public entity, four zero zero dash zero zero six as written. Is there any, and seconded, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this would be, uh, pro, uh, enforceable on all our boards, would it not?
Yes. It, this should work for all county boards that are required to have this and actually. Um, Aaron Burst asked somebody to email this over to him, so he has a copy. And cause there's other counties that are still trying to figure out exactly what they wanna do and there's gonna be some really, really general policy put into place. Because of the deadline. They're not ready for it, so.
I, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Can I look at your sentry code? Okay, the question I have is that. It says number three in the sentry code, a governing body of a city, county, township, school district, park district or water resource district. So the question I have is that is the zoning board, planning and zoning board, a governing board? When we make the recommendation to the commission to, to either forward or pass. Where we don't really have any say.
Same with the road commission.
Yeah.
Same with the park board.
Well, that specifically calls out.
This does call out park.
This does call out park board.
I think this should be, uh, applicable to planning and zoning too, Mr. Chairman.
No, I'm just questioning Commissioner Zach Meyer, cause actually I'm, planning and zoning, we do allow. Comment all the time and so.
Uh, well, and it bears the question too, is of an advertised public hearing. Are, do these rules fall into place in that public, than that published pub, public hearing?
Well, it'd just be on the agenda.
Yeah, it's on the agenda, so, and the time restrictions and that.
Fall into play as the announcement of that agenda.
And, and so planning and zoning, and we have one coming up that we know is gonna be controversial and it's the direct air capture. Um, are you gonna limit those people to three minutes? Or we, and I think at that point, the chair could say, no, we're gonna allow you up to five or whatever. So there, there's a lot in play here that I don't think everybody thought through yet.
That sense, that's actually called out in Roberts Rules of Order. The chair has that, that capability.
Right, right. The chair can change or call that out with, uh, I think in sentry code here, it says. With them, um, group, majority of the group. Can change it with their consensus. So, like I said, there's gonna be a, quite a bit in play for a while here. Until this gets hashed all the way through on all the different boards. It'd be interesting, to say the least.
Initially, I would think it would be well received just for the simple fact that the public has an option to speak, but I think it's gonna be. Sometime down the road when a, a hot button item might come into play.
Word comes up.
And then somebody would want to push, push the, the, uh, interpretation.
Yep. Well, and, and submitting a, a card twenty four hours before the meeting. I've, I just, I struggle with that one. I do, I mean, that's, I've gone to meetings and decided that there's something I should say. And so if you enforce the card rule, you can't do it until the next meeting, cause it was on the last meeting's agenda. By then the decision could be made and done. So. Not real wild about that part of, so we'll see. All right, it's been moved and seconded to adopt policy as, uh, presented. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? You know what? It's a good policy. Let's do a roll call vote. Commissioner Zach Meyer, or commi- let's start. Commissioner Morrell.
Yes.
Made the motion. Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zach Meyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash?
No.
And myself, the yes. Motion carries. All right, does anyone have anything else good for the order?
Yes, Chair, I just wanna make one, um, reflection on the last remaining person in our audience. I'm assuming is the man named Morton, or the Morton County News Journal representative, is that be correct? Yes.
Oh, no.
No?
I was with Buffalo Fire. If you haven't heard of them, it's like a, um, indigenous.
Oh, no, I haven't. By the way, I thank them for being in the audience, very studious and taking notes.
Yeah, this is my first time, so thanks for having me.
Hopefully it was as entertaining as, as boring. Budget time can be very boring. All right, anything else? If not, I would accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everybody.